Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us and thank you for staying as Boy Scouts. We really appreciate you joining us here at City Hall and in council chambers. This morning, our invocation will be given by Bishop C.E. Richardson, Sr., from Calvary First Baptist Church.
Thank you for the invitation. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we gathered here today in this chamber to take care of the city business. As we gather today, I pray that you will continue to bless our noble, energetic, and distinguished mayor, who provides our city with great leadership. I pray, Lord, that you bless every councilman and councilwoman. Guide them in their deliberation, help them with their consideration, direct them in their legislation, allow them to give us the information, and let us all see the revelation. Continue to bless our city manager, as he helps to manage the affairs of our city. Bless our police officers, who serve and protect, and wear the uniforms to help keep our city safe. Bless all of our firefighters, who take the heat for all of us. Bless all city employees. Bless the Eagle Scout, Number Three, who are blessing to so many. Bless all the citizens of Corpus Christi, who strive to make our city a better place to live. Help Corpus Christi to remain the sparkling city by the sea. Let Corpus Christi sparkle, so that new businesses will relocate to this area. Let Corpus Christi sparkle, that many people, from every walk of life, from every direction, would desire to move to Corpus Christi, for vacation, for relaxation, and for habitation. Lord bless us all to live together in love, peace, and harmony. This we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Richardson. And now, our Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag and to the Texas State Flag will be led by Sidney Quimby. She is a senior at Mary Carroll High School and a National Honor Society President. Sidney, welcome.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Sidney, and good luck with your studies. Ms. Whitaker, would you please call the role?
Mayor Paulette Juárdo.
Present.
Councilmember Roland Barera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Gil Hernández.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Myles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whitaker. We'll move on to Section E, which is our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. And we want to thank Bishop Richardson for that opening prayer. He's going to stay with us. He was at the event that we're going to highlight this morning as our first item, which is the Dilworth Park kind of rededication event that took place. So, on Saturday, February 18th, at Dilworth Park, located in City Council District Two, the community gathered to celebrate the completion of the Eagle Scout project to refurbish Dr. Henry Clay Dilworth, Jr. monument, after the original monument was vandalized several years ago. The park that this monument is at originally, or initially, was named Elgin Park, but it was renamed by the City Council in October 1990 after Bishop C. Richardson, the pastor who spoke this morning, petitioned the Parks and Rec Board to rename Elgin Park after a local hero, Dr. H.C. Dilworth, Jr., to honor his contributions to that community, known as the New Edition Community, New Edition subdivision. So, the rededication event was hosted by First Calvary Baptist Church. That's a church right down the street from the park, and it's also the church that Bishop Richardson has been the pastor of, I think, for about 30 years, Pastor? 34. He corrected me on that, so that's... Yes, sir. It was quite the event, and Bishop Richardson was kind of the emcee. But it was tremendous, the amount of community members that were out. I've been to numerous, you know, groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting events, but this one was pretty packed, Bishop, and the community was extremely embracing and pleased that the city has stepped up to re-dedicate the park, refurbish it. The mayor was there and had some eloquent speaking points as well. She's familiar with the park as her at-large councilmember days, right?
Yes.
Introduced it to it, so it was quite the event. We wanted to bring it today to the council and to the community, just to kind of highlight it. We appreciate, again, Bishop Richardson being here, cornerstone of that community, and really a cornerstone of Corpus Christi, somebody like Bishop Richardson, who's worked his whole life, really, to have positive community, faith-based community, and a great community. So, Nadia Chandler, our Assistant City Manager, was there as well, and she is going to give us kind of some highlights of that rededication ceremony, so I'll turn it over to Nadia.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good morning to the mayor and to our city council. As the city manager stated in his opening remarks, the Dr. H.C. Dilworth monument was vandalized in February of 2013, which unfortunately discouraged many families from using the park for their weekend activities and social gatherings during the holidays. Today, we recognize the dedication and hard work of our community members who helped to restore the Dr. H.C. Dilworth monument, and they are here today. Bishop C.E. Richardson, Sr., the pastor of Calvary First Baptist Church, along with Boy Scouts of America, Troop Three of United Methodist Church, led by Mr. Benton Bressler, the members of his troop, and his grandmother, Ms. Molly Jo Rogers. Together, these individuals collaborated to restore and rebuild the Dr. H.C. Dilworth monument, which celebrates the life, labor, and legacy of a great man who dedicated his life for the work of equality for all people. The Dr. Henry Clay Dilworth, Jr. Park was originally named Elgin Park. In 1990, it was the vision and passion of Bishop C.E. Richardson, Sr., to honor Dr. Henry Clay Dilworth for all his contributions to the New Edition Community. Bishop Richardson petitioned the Park and Recreation Board to rename Elgin Park to Dr. H.C. Dilworth, Jr. Park, and in 1991, that park was dedicated in honor of Dr. H.C. Dilworth. Dr. Dilworth began his role in the community as an advocate. In the early 1900s, the community, located just off of Greenwood Drive and the Easy Street area, known then as Harlem Park, was just a cotton field. Dr. H.C. Dilworth convinced the property owner, Mr. L.L. Larkade, to sell lots to African-American residents in Corpus Christi for $5.00 down, $5.00 a month. Mr. Larkade agreed, and the community there started to develop. After the purchase of the lots by the residents, he pushed for paved streets in the community. He also petitioned the Corpus Christi Independent School District, Mr. Marvin Baker and Mr. W.B. Ray, to provide a school in the community. The school district agreed, and the Calvary First Baptist Church was used as the first George Washington Carver Elementary School. Their first teacher was Mrs. Ayers. The school district provided the schoolteacher, portable blackboard, desks, and a water keg for the students. Reverend Dilworth was responsible for furnishing the stove, water service, and classroom facilities. All were welcomed in that school. We honor Dr. H.C. Dilworth because he represents diversity and integrity in our community. He represents the life of what we would call a trailblazer. He was a visionary and a great humanitarian, who sacrificed where all races of people can gather, feel safe, fellowship with neighbors, and recreate. This project was sponsored by Corpus Christi Police Department under the leadership of Senior Officer Javier Cantú and Corpus Christi Park's Recreation Director, Robert Dodd, and Assistant Director Kevin Johnson. We'd like to take this time to thank the Corpus Christi Police Department, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department, for their commitment, dedication, power of collaboration, and hard work. And thanks to all who were involved in giving their time for the resources of this community project. Thank you.
Great. Mayor, unless there's any comments, we're going to move on to the second item.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, our next item is to talk about the National Seashore Beach Management Plan that's being developed on the national seashore. The presentation is less about the ingredients of the plan, because we're not managing that. The federal government is, the Park Service, but more about the process. And I've asked Dan McGinn to coordinate with the Parks Department and other resources of his so that we, the community, the council, and the community that may be listening today can have a better understanding of what this plan process is. How is the National Park Service developing the plan? Just for some background context, the Padre Island National Seashore, short, or also known as PINS, was established in 1968, and it's part of the National Park System. The park is approximately 66 miles in length, and Dan has a map will show him that. It's just about five miles south of the city limits on Padre Island. The National Park Service has started the process of the possible development of what they're calling a beach management plan. And according to the National Park System, the project would be the first for this park. There is no beach management plan today, so it would be the first type of a plan. It would cover topics according to the National Park Service to include the Sea Turtle Program, science and recovery, beach driving. The plan could also talk about sand management, marine debris removal, and hurricane and storm resilience and recovery. That's according to, you know, the federal government, the Park Service. This is not a city plan. It's not a state plan. It's not a county plan. It's a National Park Service plan. But it's fair to state that the actual plan development process is not really well-defined. There were some public meetings that took place, and they were more static presentations, if you will, of the boards with Park Service staff by the boards. There was no overall presentation to say, "This is how we're going to go about developing the plan." So, that's why we're here today. We want to try to help the council and the community better understand it, even though it's not our process, but we've done some research, and we want to talk to you about it today. According to the National Park Service, the beach management plan could take up to five years to develop. That's an important fact that we learned from going to the meeting. We had staff at all the two meetings that were here, and there was one in San Antonio, Community Input Sessions. So, the National Park Service informed Nadia, our Assistant City Manager, that it could take up to five years. So, that's important, because the plan's not something that's going to roll out tomorrow. There's many years to come to develop it. So, with that, Dan McGinn's going to share the information he's gleaned and gathered. He's done a great job in trying to pull this together since last week. So, again, it's us trying to interpret what the federal government's doing through the National Park Service, just to talk more about the process and less about the plan ingredients or the opinions on certain things that are in the plan. So, Dan?
Great. Thank you, Peter. Daniel McGinn, Director of Planning Department. Just a brief on, kind of a little background on the National Park Service themselves. It's an agency that started in 1916 that is in charge of all our national parks across the country. It's led by a director that's nominated by the president and confirmed by the Senate. And then, we do have regions that make up throughout the country, and we're within, in Texas, Region Six. We're grouped together with Regions Seven and Eight, and that basically kind of goes up through the north, through Colorado, up through Wyoming, and then into Montana. And that director is an acting director at the moment, named Kate Hammond, who's out of Denver, who's in charge of our Region Six. Just to kind of give you an idea of the beach and the jurisdictions that we have here in our region, quite a few. So, it starts up here at Port Aransas. The map went away. Let's see here. Is there a way to bring back the map or the PowerPoint in general? Looks like we lost it.
They're working on that. I'm sorry. Yeah, they're working on it in the control room.
Okay. Well, do you want to just... I mean, we can just...
Sure. Just, I would kind of give an idea of just the different jurisdictions out on our, kind of regional... You know, Port Aransas, and then we have a bit of city beach, and there's a big bulk of state-owned property that have state parks. So, a lot of that beach is maintained, and that is under the jurisdiction of the state. And then, we have city of Corpus Christi again. And then, Nuasis County has their park, and then Nuasis County has an agreement with Claiberg County. So, as you leave the city limits and enter Claiberg, Nuasis County picks up their police service and just jurisdiction over their beaches. And then, about five or six miles south of that is where the National Park picks up. And that does go 66 miles south down to the Port Mansfield Cut, and so that's where you both go in and out of there. So, that's basically the south end of the National Park System. The National Seashore itself, PINS, was established in 1968. The geography of the park includes coastline, dunes, prairies, tidal flats, a lot of special species, migratory birds, turtles that call the park home, a lot of archaeological sites, which I actually didn't know about until kind of doing the research this last week. A lot of shipwrecks have been discovered within and off the coast of the park. Activities include beachcombing, fishing, camping, boating, windsurfing, different kinds of four-wheeling, birding, kayaking, canoeing. A big attraction is the turtle releases. I know a lot of people, I've been out there a few times for that myself. And they attract, at least according to some of their data, for 2020, they had over 617,000 visitors to the park itself. And then, just kind of talk a little bit about beach management plans themselves, which is what the Park Service is working on or working towards. We sometimes, we may call them erosion response plans or dune protection plans here in Texas. But it's basically these documents that kind of give best practices on how you might handle beach maintenance, dune protection, dune walkover or new construction within the dune system, how you may want to build a beach access road. We're going through that right now. We have a road that was approved in our bond system, and what is the best design to do that? How you may park and do driving on the beach? Animal control, and that's, you know, with dogs or end or special species, and how you may care for them or protect them? User fees, trash. There's just a multitude of things that could be within one of these types of documents. And we did look through all the federal park systems to kind of get an idea if a beach plan existed. We didn't find one, but we looked at Gulf Islands, that's Florida, Mississippi, Point Reyes out in California, Cape Cod in Massachusetts, and Fire Island in New York. They all have a plan they call a general management plan, which has a lot of elements, I think, that you may find in a beach management plan. So, even though they didn't have a specific beach management plan, they did have the separate document that I think would look a whole lot like what maybe the National Parks here is trying to create. And so, yes, they'll, they have a specific process they need to go through. Like Peter said, it could take up to five years, but I think we're just right now at the very initial steps with the PINS, that they're just really getting feedback, and I don't think they even made the decision to go forward with the plan just yet. They're still just getting one input on several different topics. And as mentioned, there was three meetings last week here, two local here at the aquarium, one up in San Antonio. And again, their goal was just to get feedback from the public. Obviously, the top kind of two priorities that we've been hearing about here locally in the media was about the Sea Turtle Program and how that's funded and the different aspects of that, how that could impact beach driving and, you know, just different issues that they may be having at the park with capacity and the amount of vehicles that they're dealing with. Sand management, how they may move sand around to better protect the dune system and erosion. Marine debris removal, apparently that's kind of the... There's two kind of gulfs in the way the water moves that does bring a lot of debris up on the National Park System. So, that is an issue that they have to deal with, though. That is one other topic they're interested in dealing with a little bit differently. And then, finally, hurricane and storm recovery. They are, they had the three meetings last week, but they are still taking input through March 14th. And you can do that through their project website, and that's parkplanning.nps.gov, and you can find that particular project on that website. And there's a lot of great background material. Basically, everything that was presented at the meeting, you can find on that website. They have a newsletter. Public can kind of go through that, basically, as if they attended the meeting. So, but March 14th is the deadline to provide any feedback. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Councilmember Pusley? Councilman Passley.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, I would highly advise that, you know, whatever we do with respect to this, that we work closely with the county on this, because the county has a beach advisory committee. They also have a Parks Board, and that Parks Board is created by state law and governed by state law. And as you well know, Nuasis County, just a few years ago, took over management of the beach from Bob Hall Pier down to the National Seashore. So, I think it'd be really important for us to join forces with them on whatever we're trying to do to impact this.
Yes, sir, Councilman. We're doing that. So, Scott Cross, right, he's still, right. And you're right, the city worked with the county to divide the management of the beach. It was, it was like a checkerboard where it was the city, county, city, county. So, we agreed for us to do in between the state park, and then the county would do more towards the Bob Hall Pier. So, that was an agreement that City Council approved. But we are working with them as well as other entities for the region.
Good. Okay. Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend last Wednesday's meeting, and I had a chance to visit with a lot of the folks that were there representing not only the consultant, which the consultants out of Maryland that the National Park Service has engaged, but also the superintendent and others that were there on behalf of PINS. So, got a lot of good feedback, talked to some of the folks that were there too, just to inquire as to what was going on, and there's a lot of concern. As you know, our community is very diligent about making sure that our beaches remain open, that we have open beaches, and a lot of the information that the Park Service had on display there, several of them talked in particular about vehicular-free areas. So, I think that's what was probably getting most people fired up and concerned there, was those type of comments that were being made in their, in some of their handouts and things. With respect to what the National Park Service has maybe done on some other beaches in terms of other beach management plans that maybe we could look at, I do understand in visiting with those folks that night that that same consultant has been engaged by the Park Service on a couple of other beaches. One, I guess, recently in Puerto Rico, and another one in the Virgin Islands. So, I don't know if those would be opportunities for us to look and see what they did there. Let's see. And then, also, I did reach out to the GLO about this to make sure they were in the loop, and they didn't seem to indicate that they were in the loop, but that they've offered to bring parties together and have a joint meeting with the National Park Service, the GLO, and us, and whichever other stakeholders here locally that we want to try and include in that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, just for future reference, I know we've talked about this before, in case we have some technical difficulties, we would still have the presentation. We didn't have it in our agenda, so if you can, anything that comes to make sure it's on the agenda.
Right, admittedly, this was, I put it on late Friday, and we've been working over the weekend to get the presentation that obviously we couldn't show this morning, so...
Well, I know, you know, I know we're going to be upgrading this here at some point, right? So, I understand that we're dealing with some older technology, and I don't, you know, I don't want to beat up on our IT folks because they've been dealing with, having to deal with this, but, you know, please make sure it gets on the, so we can see it at least ahead of time so we can view it.
Yeah, right. So, he, Dan just finished it last night, but we'll email it to the council this morning after the council meeting. Dan will email it to the council.
Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, this is a very touchy subject in terms of, you know, anything that would put closures on the beach. Now, I understand it's a federal park, but I think maybe we should take an official position on this and maybe put a resolution together to say that we're not in support of anything that would close a beach to vehicular travel, traffic. And that way, there's something official documentation from us as a city, as a council in reflection to that. So, I would ask that we would...
Well, and Councilman, to that point, we have been talking, obviously being in Austin last week, we, I've also advocated on that, but, and speaking with Wendy, that is absolutely the plan. So, yes, and that will be our strongest, you know, form of taking a stance on that, and that is very much the concern. Councilman Suckley and I have had numerous conversations regarding SB 434, which is, you know, the bill that would restrict vehicular access, which is a very big deal. We're also talking, by the way, with our federal lobbyist, Larry Myers. He will be here, I'm not sure if it's this week or next week, but we will be speaking with him. So, back to your point, that will, that is absolutely the plan, along with, you know, possibly other subjects that we may have to do that with, but this one being one that's pretty much moving fairly quickly. And Councilman Suckley, I want to thank you for your attendance and your participation, active participation in these conversations, especially in bringing the GLO to the table to have that meeting. Thank you. We're going to take, Councilman Klein has a quick remark, I think, and then we'll go to public comment and come back to your report, Mr. Zanoni. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo, I guess, Councilman Hernandez's sentiments. I think the city should weigh in on this. We are a gateway community, and so if there's 617,000 visitors to the National Park, to the seashore every year, that, any change in that visitation based on changes in their turtle program or beach access could have a significant economic impact on Corpus Christi here, so I think we definitely should be weighing in on this.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Dan. So, Mr. Zanoni, we'll come back to your last item.
Okay, yes, ma'am, no problem.
So, because it's noon, we're going to move on to Section F, which is public comment. So, before we begin, Mr. Risley, would you please recite the rules of decorum?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So, individuals will be called upon in the order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I'd like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located here at the podium and state your name and address prior to speaking. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment. One is at this time, and the other is at the time that we actually hear the item on the agenda. Please choose one in which to speak at. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer at the base of the microphone that is giving you the exact time left. If you will, please make note of that and your comments when you hear the buzzer go or end your sentence, when you hear the buzzer go off, we would appreciate it. If you have a petition or any information pertinent to your subject matter, if you'll please hand it over to our City Secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute it to us. So, with that, we will start with Linda Jabeau. And if Sean Flanagan, Dara Ridgers, Michael Ridgers, and Victoria Holland, if you could all please come up and have a seat on this front row, that would be much appreciated.
I always have to do this. Mayor, Council, my name is Linda Jabeau, and I live at 410 Southern Street. Mayor Guajardo, council members, Mr. Zanoni. I've been working with Mayor Guajardo and members of the rescue community for many years on various animal issues. I've seen, well, I've served on both the Animal Advisory Committee for the city as well as the mayor's ad hoc committee. Today, I'm speaking as someone who's just exhausted by rescue, someone who appreciates the steps forward, but would love to see something that will make a real impact on our community. I want to start by saying thank you for listening. I've reached out to many of you. Thank you for seeing. Thank you for feeling what rescuers feel every day. To say that we have a stray issue in Corpus Christi is just a little bit of an understatement. Since moving here in 2009, I have had about 200 fosters. I've stopped counting. My current fosters, which you have pictures of, the before and after, they were taken two months apart, were tagged by Faith and Hope Foundation from Corpus Christi Animal Care Services. I picked them up on December 24th. The picture you have is of them at the pound at my home, and then what they look like now. They were full of worms, they were mangy, their ribs and spines protruding. They're safe now, but you know, I do have to wonder about their littermates, the ones that weren't found. Because that's the life strays on our streets. The thing that the ordinance and the funding for span neuter say to me personally is that you understand that the city facility is not the fix. In order to reach zero growth and have a population of strays that's manageable, we need the city's funding. We need your help. We need your leadership. We need low-cost clinics. We need the ordinances. They work hand in hand. In closing, I'd like to thank Joel Skidmore and all the staff, Mr. Risley's staff, and in writing and fine-tuning the ordinance. Linda Stewart and Constance Tanches have been so supportive and just really pushing to make things better. And thank you, Mayor, for your unfaltering leadership. There have been times when I've wanted to quit, and I'm sure a lot of people would like it for me to quit, and there's always this little voice saying, "No, just hang in there. We've got this. We can get this done." So, thank you. And to all of you, I promise to try and not stalk you at, like all the events. Like I said, I'm going to try, but there really are no guarantees on that, okay? So, thank you very much, everyone. I really do appreciate it.
Linda, thank you so much. Sean Flanagan?
My name's Sean Flanagan, and I live at 4218 Herndon Street, lived there for 22 years. And I thought it was really neat that our firefighters are fourth in the nation in raising money for this cause. That was really, really good. What I'm talking to you today about is a problem that affects the firefighters. The problem is, is the city's program to train firefighters forces the cadets to get a COVID shot many of them don't want, and so we've had people drop out of the program, do not complete training because they don't want to get a COVID shot. As the city is not a hospital, and the city can use other training outlets that exist besides Delmar College, which uses Driscoll Hospital in their training program, which has this requirement, that's why it's the problem. It's, one interpretation could be the city's in violation of the governor's requirement that Texans not be denied employment because of COVID shot requirements. The simple solution to this deal is, is to use a program that doesn't have the COVID shot requirements, or go back to Delmar, have them adjust their program, so they don't require the cadets to get a shot they don't want to get. Now, what I hand it out to you is a reason why kids, people, might not want to get a COVID shot. This is CDC information from their Vaccine Adverse Effect Reporting System. This is through the 27th of February of this month. I draw your attention, I put a star on it, a number of deaths. The first two columns are international, last two columns are US. The interesting part is the COVID, the deaths revolving COVID are through three years of collecting data. The deaths resulting from all the other vaccines folks get is 33 years of data. In that short period of time, three years versus 33 years, the COVID death rate of folks that gotten the COVID shots is three times what it is for those folks in the other vaccinations. And, you know, the death is just one of the deals. So, basically, I think it's reasonable that some folks might want to not want to get that shot, and they might want to be firefighters, they follow science, and they say, "Hey, the cost benefit of getting these shots is not a good idea." So, I don't think the city, you know, maybe inadvertently, should be forcing our firefighter cadets to have to get shots they don't want to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Dara Ridgers?
Good afternoon. I'm Dara Ridgers, and I live at 5918 South Oso Parkway. I'm aware that firefighter recruits' applications are being denied because they are refusing to take the COVID shot. I strongly believe we are discriminating against and denying employment opportunities to young, healthy, motivated individuals that want to serve our community. Being a firefighter paramedic is a profession that is, at times, unforgiving and extremely demanding physically. It is not a career field that just anyone can work in. But unfortunately, with the current city policy, when we do have young, healthy, and physically fit applicants that want to become firefighters, we tell them no because they don't want to take a shot. Given what we know about the response of COVID in young people, this policy just doesn't make any sense at all. We want to encourage our generation in this city to serve our community, not discourage them with policies like this. Here are some startling numbers as of February 26th this year regarding the effects this shot is having on athletes, people that are in the most physically fit condition. 1,762 cardiac arrests or serious heart issues. Of that number, 1,221 died. That is 63% of the total that suddenly collapsed and died. These are the numbers since the COVID shot started being administered. I hope these numbers alarm you as they do me, and yet our city is denying employment opportunities to healthy individuals who don't want to take the shot. I ask all of you to do the right thing and abolish this discriminatory policy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Ridgers. Michael Ridgers?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Ridgers. I live at 5918 South Oso Parkway here in Corpus Christi. I retired a little over 12 years ago after 36 years in the Corpus Christi Fire Department. I know that it's not an easy accomplishment to be selected as a trainee for the fire department. It was, and probably still is, a very rigorous endeavor. Not all who try can make the cut. It's come to my attention that the Corpus Christi Fire Department is mandating that all new hires must receive a COVID-19 shot before being accepted as a trainee in the fire department. I applaud those who have stood their ground and refused to compromise their health after completing the written and physical requirements. This mandate is wrong. Have you heard any of the news surrounding the recipients of these experimental vaccines? Have you heard about the illness and death attributed to these shots? This mandate is illegal, immoral, and unacceptable. We, as Texans and US citizens, have a right to refuse to take into our bodies the poison that is in COVID-19 shots. The governor of Texas has issued executive orders GA 38, GA 39, and GA 40, which prohibit the requirement of a COVID-19 shot by government entities or any other business entity in Texas. You are denying employment to otherwise eligible applicants for the fire department just because they will not take a COVID jab that you require, which, by the way, is a violation of GA 40, which states in part, "No entity in Texas can compel receipt of a COVID-19 vaccine by any individual, including an employee or a consumer who objects to such vaccination for any reason of personal conscience, based on a religious belief or for medical reasons, including prior recovery from COVID-19. I hereby suspend all relevant statutes to the extent necessary to enforce this prohibition." This, this order was signed on October 11th, 2021, and is still in effect. I appeal to you, as a former firefighter and a citizen, do not strip away the opportunities from these potential trainees because they refuse to endanger their health and future needlessly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgers. Victoria Holland? And if Anisa Beverly Beal, Angela Powell, Pat Craig, and Samuel Friar, if you would all come down to the first row, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. My name is Victoria Holland. I'm a resident of Corpus Christi at 235 Ohio Avenue. Thank you again for your time. I'm also here to speak about the issues of mandated vaccination for firefighter trainees in this county, city, sorry. I think that we got into a very sticky situation based on a lot of good intentions. It seems to me that it's very logical that the city would contract with Delmar for their firefighter training, and it seems very logical to me that Delmar would reach out to... firefighter training, and it seems very logical to me that Delmar would reach out to Driscoll, which is one of the foremost hospitals for children in the state of Texas to do their pediatric, uh, training there as well, for the paramedic part of it. I think we get into an issue, though, where we have to recognize that just because the intentions were good, and nobody ever meant to create a situation where we're discriminating against people based on their bodily autonomy, nobody meant to do that, but that's where we are. And so, it's on us, I think, as a city, to look at our policies, look at our contracts, look at what creative solutions there are, and protect our citizens from any type of discrimination this way. And additionally, protect our citizens from any type of malicious lawsuit or loss of funding that could come from us blatantly ignoring a governor's standing executive order. I'm not going to go in or out of the pros and cons of the vaccine. That's not why I'm here. I really just want us all to think about what it means when we put systems in place and the consequences related to those. Right now, the consequence is, we effectively discriminate in our hiring practices based on individuals' bodily autonomy, and I think nobody here wants that to be the case. So, as frustrating as it is, and I'm sure that it would be so much easier just to keep the simple system in place as is, no discussions had, but I think we have to have those discussions and have just some creative ideas about how we can protect our citizens' bodily autonomy and not discriminate in that manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victoria. Anisa Bevly Beal.
Hi, I'm Anisa Beal, and my address is 2033 FM 665 Road in Corpus Christi. I'm the director and founder of Edgar and Ivy's Cat Sanctuary located at 3368 FM 2292 in Corpus Christi. We are a 501(c)(3) public charity committed to helping the cats and kittens in our community that are in the most desperate situations. We tag from six animal controls in the area, and we accept cats and kittens from the public. We did intake on about 800 cats last year, and we are on target to intake about 1,200 this year. I'm here to give my support to the proposed intact animal fee ordinance. A common statement I make to the community is, "You are breeding them faster than I can save them. You cannot imagine the suffering we see down here in the trenches. I am stunned daily by the indifference shown to the homeless animals roaming our streets. Cats and dogs are not treasured family members because there are too many of them." I would like to close by assuring you that Edgar and Ivy is here to support this community and the helpless and the hopeless cats and kittens. I ask you to do everything in your power to help them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Powell.
Hi, I'm Angela Powell. I live at 1709 Amazon Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm here on behalf of animals and cats and dogs that do not have a voice. I hope to be their voice today. In 2006, my eyes were opened to the suffering of so many street dogs. They were invisible to most of the population. Poor, skinny mama dogs scrounging for scraps of food while their tiny puppies, too young to be street savvy, would follow them into the streets and get hit by traffic. Dogs covered in mange, dogs too weak to move, overcome by heat exhaustion, starvation, dehydration, and internal parasites. Dogs left to endure broken legs, infected wounds, dogs infested with fleas and ticks, dogs suffering from advanced stage of heartworm disease. So much suffering. I was compelled to do everything in my power to alleviate their suffering. Fast forward to 17 years later, I'm still fighting for them. It's our time, it's time for our city to do more to address this ongoing animal abuse, neglect, and overpopulation of cats and dogs. There needs to be another way to control this crisis of animal overpopulation besides killing the animals. We have an army of nonprofit organizations, shelter workers, independent rescuers, volunteers fighting to rescue these helpless street dogs and cats and animals facing euthanasia, but still, in the end, Corpus Christi Animal Control is still killing healthy animals. We need to kill the crisis, not the animals. We must prevent animals from being born in the first place. What's the cause of overpopulation? Irresponsible pet owners and greedy, clueless breeders only out to make a profit. This includes professional hobby breeders, pet shops, and puppy mills. The solution? We need humane education, spay and neuter clinics, and enforcement of laws. As a community, we can and we must do better for our companion animals. I'm asking you to support the resolutions for updates of Corpus Christi Code of Ordinance, Chapter 6, Animal Care and Control. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Thank you.
Pat Craig.
Good afternoon. I'm Pat Craig. I live in area code 78414. I understand there is a requirement to get the COVID shot in order to become a cadet in firefighter training here in Corpus Christi. I believe this requirement should be removed, not only because it violates the governor's executive order prohibiting vaccine mandates, but that there is a great potential for harm. An example of this harm is from a letter to the Secretary of Defense with statistics from across the U.S. military. It's summarized in the handout I gave you. Based on data from the Defense Medical Epidemiology Database, which is known as DMED, there is a significant increase in registered diagnoses for miscarriages, cancer, and many other medical conditions in 2021 compared to a five-year average from 2016 to 2020. A couple of those are hypertension over 200, 2,000%. Breast cancer up 487%. Female infertility up 472%. Testicular cancer up 369%. Tachycardia up 302%. They don't mention myocarditis or pericarditis because they removed that from the database before it could be brought out of it. Now, this was a letter from just over a year ago. Since then, access to this system has been greatly restricted. Who knows what the numbers are over the past year? As a veteran, I find this deeply concerning regarding our young people. My son is a Navy corpsman who was ordered to take a COVID shot and was harmed. Before being pressured to take it, he was running with a group of corpsmen, training with the Marines. A young corpsman fell out and was having a seizure. My son administered CPR. She died days later. Adverse events were not unexpected. As you see from the FDA slide that you have, the second page, this slide shows the FDA's possible list of possible adverse event outcomes, and appeared briefly during a public meeting by the U.S. FDA, their Product Advisory Committee, in October of 2020, reviewing the safety and efficacy of these shots. To bring this back closer to home, last August, a healthy young man died on a football field here in Corpus Christi. He had recently passed his certifications to become a firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Samuel. Yeah, Samuel Friar.
I'm not sure if it's possible to have, I'd actually presented IT information to be displayed.
Mr. Friar?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we did make copies of your presentation, and the council has that because the system isn't working.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
I'm Samuel Andre Friar. I live in 78414. It's the zip code. You know, on my way here, I was, I passed by a billboard on 286 that was soliciting for first responders, firefighters. And I couldn't help but think, after 30 years retiring in the milit, Army as a colonel, I couldn't help but think about the challenges we're having in our military, getting military service members after they've been pushed out of the military because they refused to take a COVID shot that was experimental. And given the colleagues that have gone before me, I'm not going to go all those details, but I will bring up some information. This is coming from the CDC's website itself, on the COVID tracker. And when you look at that website, after 1 million and 1,115,000 deaths out of the total 103 million cases, you find it's a 1.8% death rate, which is really close to a 99% recovery, and that's using their most extreme died with versus died of COVID. Taken a little further, there is, as mentioned before, there's a triple amount of death within the two or three years that COVID shots have been going on versus the, since 1990, of the cumulative of all the vaccines that have ever been listed. That is dangerous. As far as a little further, if we think of it, the adverse events are also astounding and something to be recognized. There's over 1.5 million recorded adverse events in the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, which is the CDC's own reporting system. And doctors know that it is highly, it is very under-reported. So, we're talking percents of reported versus what's actually has taken place. Now, our firefighters are from 19, no earlier than 19, and no later than 36. That is the plate, the location where the majority of the adverse events take place in that group. Dr. Joseph Ladapo, the Surgeon General of Florida, recognized that as a problem, so he made sure that it was put out, that they would not force anyone in that age group to take these shots. Now, I'm proud of my daughter, who is now a registered nurse. She refused to take that when she was a nursing student, and I'm proud of her that she did not do it. And I'm glad that she did not do it because she's still healthy and with us today. So, with that in mind, just consider the fact that there are so many things that have taken place, so much harm has been done, and we should not continue the narrative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friar. Ronald Smith, Dr. Jennifer Scott, Dustin Cronin, and Adam Rios. If you'll please come to the front row. And Ronald Smith, you are up. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Ron Smith. I live at 517 Bermuda Place here in town. Been a member, resident of Corpus Christi for 44 years, a little bit over. Over the years, I've volunteered at a lot of different places. I've worked with the Dolphins in the Marine Memorial Standing Network. I volunteered out at the Ark, and I've worked with the Turtles out at the National Seashore. After retiring a few years ago, I started doing a lot of fostering and some transporting the animals to other towns. And it's become very aware, I've become very aware that we have a really severe problem with excess unneutered, unspayed animals in this town. And we have a bunch of people like Mrs. Powell, who's been working on this problem for a lot of years, but it's still been overpowering. So, we really would like you to support not only the spay and neuter law, but also the intact pet law, in case somebody does want to breed their dog, they have to have a permit, as I understand it. So, I'll just keep this short. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, if otherwise, I'll let you go.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you've done. Dr. Jennifer Scott.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. My name is Dr. Jennifer Scott, and I live in the zip code 78415. I am the current chair for the Committee for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Committee we have here in Corpus. I am personally here today because our committee was unable to meet at a special session to review and send over recommendations to council regarding our open seats, which you guys have on your agenda today. We have two reappointments that I'm asking council to consider, myself, Dr. Jennifer Scott, and Olivia Allen, who are both committed to the mission of the committee and advocating for people with disabilities here in Corpus Christi. After reviewing the other applications, I wanted to make a personal recommendation for three open seats we have on our committee. I'm recommending the following three people: Dr. Ashley Vogt, Kelsey Dahlbeck, and Sandra Flores. Thank you for taking the time to review our applications for our committee.
Thank you very much. Yes. Dr. Ashley, Kelsey.
Uh, Dr. Ashley Vogt, V-O-G-G-T, with Texas A&amp;M, Corpus Christi. Kelsey Dahlbeck, D-A-H-L-B-E-C-K, and Sandra Flores.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Dustin Cronin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today, I'd like to talk about the progress that we've been working with, with people in the autism community and people with disabilities. Four weeks ago from today, it was my great honor to give a presentation at the Police Academy and to meet with the deputy chief on Friday. And today, I also want to remind that whenever I do this for the community, I'm not doing this for any kind of reposition or, and I'm not doing this for myself. This is about helping other people. And here's a favorite quote that I want to quote, and it's from President John F. Kennedy. It's about what the community, I mean, excuse me, what you can do for the community, not what the community can do for you. And that's all I have today.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Dustin. Thank you. Adam Rios.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good morning. Yes, afternoon.
And now for something completely different. My name is Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court here in Corpus Christi, Texas. I come to share some good news that is happening with the city, more specifically so in the last week. I'm looking forward to sharing this as I make my trek tomorrow to the San Carlos Reservation, where I will be participating in ceremony and powwows over the weekend, and also at the same time promoting our city. This previous weekend, the TGSA, the Texas Gulf Surfing Association, held its Corpus Christi Open at North Packerie Channel, and local news was out there to cover it. And it was really important because when you have the director of such an event saying it was by far the best competition so far this season, that's bringing a lot of positive energy to the city. There was over 150 competitors over the two-day event. Simultaneously over the weekend, Corpus Christi Skate Park at Cole Park has officially been put on the permanent schedule of events for the South Texas Contest Series, including possibly hosting it as a headlining event, basically having this be where the championships are held. Also last week, I was invited by local news to discuss the future of Salinas Park, more specifically the BMX park that we all know will happen. Each of you has handouts. One of them is something that we came together. It's a proposal, and it's under the magic number of $50,000 to completely resoil and refurbish Salinas Park to make a BMX park. The colored handout that I gave you is what we'd like to do eventually down the road at Bill Witt, which has all the numbers broken down, and that would be a world-class track, and that would be something that we could consider later. But for right now, we are really excited about the possibility of getting Salinas Park going, because the proposal that you have, which I've also shared with Parks and Rec, and they are crunching their numbers, we've been meeting with them. What we're excited about with that is that is something that if we could do, that park could be built and completely redone in five to six weeks tops. It would be completely ready this spring and ready to go by summer. The main focus that I wanted to was also to share, me and the people who I cooperate all this with and came up with all these numbers for is... all this with and came up with all these numbers for is, at the end of the day, when I do come here, I try and, try and be positive. I try and come with solutions. I've never really come in with specific numbers before, and that's why I brought those today, so that you can see exactly what we've given Parks and Rec. This is a very feasible project that could happen, that could benefit a lot of kids here and bring more attention. So much so, the final thing that happened over this weekend was Sunday, I met with a gentleman who moved here over 20 years ago, and he brought a little event called Velocity Games here. And that happened in Corpus for two years. He would love to bring that back here, given the fact that we have all this progressive stuff happening in, in the community. So thank you all for always listening to me and pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Melissa Nussete and Kathy Wimmer, Rachel Caballero, and John Weber, if you can all come to the front, we'd appreciate it. And Melanie Gomez, I'm sorry, she would be the last in person.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Nussete, and I live at 6530 Peacock Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the puppies. I brought you guys pictures, and I just wanted to show you that in an 18-hour period on one social media account, there were 35 posts of stray dogs. That's only yesterday on the 27th and only till 2:30 in the afternoon. So I wanted to leave this with the council, so you could see how many dogs in a 17-hour period are just roaming around. These are the puppies that I have fostered in 2022. For faith and hope, for canines and kittens, for anybody that's asked me. Don't ask me if I have baseboards in my house, because these puppies are all teething. But I want everybody to see, this is what's out there. They're beautiful, but they cannot speak for themselves. There's no way. I get them with worms, I get them with ringworm, I get them with mange, I get them with, I don't know. I have some really good success stories, though. This little puppy right here, he needed a $2,000 transfusion, and I'm here to ask for money for the rescues, because there's no way. And I'm here to say that all the money that needs to go to animal control, because they need money to get bigger, because Corpus is growing, we're calling them and they're saying there's no room. Well, I don't want to push them, because I don't want them to euthanize a dog. That's not fair. The dogs were, they didn't ask to be domesticated. They need our help. We've got to help them. These dogs right here, that I'm going to show you both, that I'll show you, I have tons of pictures back there, but I picked the ones that I thought were the best. This dog that spent four years on a chain. This dog is, is this dog now. This little litter of, they, they, we find them in boxes and dumpsters, we find them, they, they drop them off at animal control. They call the rescues, the rescues don't have the money to, to, we're busting at the seams. We have no more, this, this puppy right here, there's already a new litter born of Dobermans. They're breeding them in their backyard. They're already asking for people to put down a deposit on the baby. When they don't sell it, six weeks, then they just throw them out on the street. They're being dumped. I would ask you to please read the Dallas Animal Control Rules that they have. They have spay and neuter. They let people have like 20 days to go spay and neuter their dog. If they don't do it, then they get fined. There's no tethering unless an adult is out there watching them being tethered. I mean, I challenge anybody to tether themselves for the rest of their lives and see how fun that is.
Right.
It's not fun. And also, Dallas tells them 10, 10 by 10 spaces are not big enough to have to have 150 feet.
Thank you, Ms. Nussete, and thank you for all you've done with that.
I want you to hear this.
Sure, I would love to bring it to the back while we're eating lunch, so everybody can see it again. It's important, this is very dear to me, but we'll move on. We'll have opportunity to comment more on that a little later. Kathy Wimmer. Kathy?
Can y'all hear me?
Can you move it down?
I can touch it? Okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Wimmer. I live at 518 Pearman Place. Good afternoon, Mayor Paulette. This is a historical moment. I haven't been here since, I think, 2017. Oh, and the rest of the councilmen. Hi, Jim. Some of you I know, Jim and Mike, and Michael.
Of course.
Okay. I'm here to invite you Thursday. Thursday is Texas Independence Day, which is very important in the state of Texas. No other state has the history that we do. We're having a ceremony at the Central Jury Room in the courthouse at 1 o'clock, from about 1 to 2. The DRT are bringing cookies, if that's some enticement, to get you to show up. You are cordially invited by me, Kathy Wimmer. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you very much. Rachel Caballero.
Well, it's never good when I'm here. Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock Avenue. Welcome, hi, elected officials and paid taxpayer, paid employees. We, as a community, have been failing. We've been allowing you all to run our city without any true oversight. We know now that this has been a huge mistake on our part. As a community, we showed up to the CC Polymers Permit Renewal Request last Thursday. We showed up to fight and protect our bays from endless industry pollution. Much to my surprise, we had four city council members present, the city manager and some city staffers. Two out of the four people we elected stayed through public comment, and the other two left before public comment even started, along with the city manager. Why wouldn't you all want to stay and hear the concerns of the community and get a better understanding of how we all feel regarding these desalination permits? Don't you all represent the voice of the community? In a complete and utter betrayal to us all, the Water Department Supervisor welcomed the pollution and destruction of our Corpus Christi bays on behalf of you all, because he was definitely not speaking on behalf of the people that pay him. Let me make one thing clear: We did not elect this supervisor to represent us, and we didn't elect Peter Zanoni either. You all were elected to represent us and to protect our community. Under no circumstances should a city staffer speak on behalf of the community because they were not elected. This especially if two elected officials were present. We recognize that pawning off such an inhumane endorsement that it is a, that is a blatant disregard for our bays to a city staffer to vocalize was not only cowardly, but also politically motivated, because you are all too afraid to publicly be tied to destroying our bays, because you know that you will not get reelected. CC Polymers let the cat out of the bag that we are going to need more water and lots of it. How is there enough water for them and not for us, the community? Where are they going to get this water? We are the minority users, and we are currently on drought restrictions on which you want to turn into a crime if people overuse. But now, there's enough water for new industry, 800 new homes on the island, and even more so on the south side? Some of you are lying to us. We are awake, we're going to fight and expose you. You all will not destroy our community over profits and greed. I would like to thank councilmembers Jim Klein and Sylvia Camples for staying to hear their constituents. Your fellow councilmembers could learn a thing or two from you both. Finally, I would like to request that Michael Hunter recuse himself on any desalination business. His lobbyist business partner, Larry Elizondo, is a conflict, a complete conflict of interest and opposes the goals of the community to protect our water and bays.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. John Weber.
I, first of all, one.
Turn on your thing.
I have no idea what she's talking about. Two, she's not allowed to do that, and we allow that all the time. And three, if you're going to make a false statement like that, there needs to be consequences when it comes to people's personal lives.
Any comment, Miles?
We probably ought to talk, are we talking about the rules of decorum?
We're talking about the accusation made against a councilmember by a resident.
You can't make personal accusations, especially if they're false. I have no relation to this, I, I'm not going to recuse myself, because there's nothing to recuse myself for.
Right, I thought you're not supposed to make derogatory comments against councilmembers.
There are some changes that were made in the state law regarding citizen comment.
I don't care if she says all the bad things in the world about.
Okay, we'll talk about it then.
But if it's a false statement, it needs to be recognized as a false statement, and this shouldn't be.
Well, let, let, let me interact, and I really wish that somebody, Miles or Rebecca, would catch this when it happens. You are able to make a statement, a factual statement back, which I've done, and y'all have seen me done in, in the past. So I know you may need to clear some things up, Miles, in regards to the legal aspect, but in terms of, yes, you can make a statement, a factual statement.
Because I'm not getting paid on any of that.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna, well, let's debrief, I'll debrief it, Miles, and we'll let the council know what is, what's acceptable by state law.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to concur with Mr. Hunter.
Can you put your microphone on, councilman?
We keep, it's on, I don't know if it's working.
It is.
We, we keep having these discussions, and when we turn and try to get advice from our council, it's like crickets. So we, we need, Miles, we need to have definitive explanations for this for the council. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, we'd like to point out that much of the ability to control the content of citizen communication was taken away by the state legislature. So that's, that, that's an important note, is that we have very limited authority, so when people, citizens of communication state things that simply aren't true, you, we have a limited ability to, to stop, to stop that. In large part, it's a, it is a, you can control the time that people are allotted to make statements, but you have very little power to control the content. What you can restrict them to is talking about city-related issues. You can, however, make fact-related statements back at the.
Right.
So you can, you can state facts in response to matters in citizen communication.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to be clear, all this is not facts. Right now, we're having these conversations back and forth, which I thought we weren't supposed to be going back and forth. The only thing that we can say as city council people, and I'm sorry, you know, Michael, that you feel that way, you know, what the previous speaker said, but the point is that we were instructed that we can only direct the city manager, that's the only, and say the facts. So I just want to make sure to say that, that whatever is going on right now is inappropriate. And again, just letting you know that this is what I've been told, that we are not allowed to go back and forth with whoever speaks. The only thing that we are allowed to do, Mayor, is to state a fact or to direct the city manager. Is that correct, Miles?
That's, that's what happened. So Michael asked the city manager, I'm sorry, the lawyer or counsel, to clarify. He then made a factual statement. So yes, and she's not at the podium, so it's not going back and forth. And that certainly cannot, you're right, you, you cannot do that, but you can make a factual statement. And I've done that many times, in terms of somebody saying, you know, we're not doing anything about the homeless. Yes, we are, and I stated what we are, but so, for example. But either way, we're, we're not going back and forth, we need clarification, and we'll do that, you've addressed it. He made his factual statement, and now we're going to move on. Mr. Weber.
John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Vision: The City of Corpus Christi organization will become the benchmark for all other Texas cities. Mission Statement: The mission of the City of Corpus Christi, Texas, is to deliver municipal services which meet the vital health, safety, and general welfare needs of the residents and which sustain and improve their quality of life. As we work to achieve this mission, we employ fiscal discipline, continuous improvement, first-rate customer service, and straightforward communications. In this work, we will tolerate no mediocrity. Ethical Foundation: Be honest, be fair, tell the truth, keep your word, exercise integrity. I was originally going to just read the city's mission statement, but something unprecedented happened last Thursday. I have attended many TCEQ public meetings. I have never heard a city employee make comment using his official capacity before at a TCEQ meeting. I find it hard to believe he acted by himself without coordination from his supervisor. When did city employees start deciding on their own how the city stands on a particular issue? I thought it was the job of the council. One councilman is a stickler for precedent. He should be the loudest voice in the room, asking for resignations for all employees that were involved with this stunt. It appears very little thought went into staff comments supporting CC Polymers' water discharge permit unless the city water department is abandoning their own proposed decel plant on the Inner Harbor. If CC's polymers permit is approved, it is less likely the city's plant will be approved because of the salinity limits in the same body of water. In the unlikely outcome that both desalination plants were approved, the city's plant would have higher operational costs because its intake would be downstream from the very saline discharge of CC Polymers' plant. This is inexcusable behavior. I would suggest severe reprimand be given to all employees involved at a minimum. I also recommend, if there are any statements of fact, they be thoughtful and factual. And as always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Melanie Gomez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Melanie Gomez, and I live at 3902 Willow Street. I'm currently the Vice Chair for our Committee for Persons with Disabilities. I've been on the committee since July of 2018, and I'm proud to serve. So I'm here today just to provide you with my personal recommendations as well for the five vacancies that you all will be voting on in just a few moments. I've reviewed all the applications and would like to recommend reappointments of our current Chair, Dr. Jennifer Scott, and one of our current members, Olivia Allen. I'd also like to recommend for new appointments, Dr. Ashley Vogt, Kelsey Dalbeck, and Sandra Flores. Also, in my personal opinion, all five of these individuals are committed to advocating for persons with disabilities and have the knowledge and background to be an asset to our committee. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez, we appreciate that. Okay, that concludes our in-person public comment, and that'll take us over to our WebEx video, and then in-person out-of-town comment. Ms. What about?
The first video, well, actually, just to, to preface, we won't have WebEx video today due to the problems we're having with our system, so it'll be audio only, just so the participants know that. So Ms. Del Souza, I don't know if you heard my comment, but this will be an audio public comment only due to the technical difficulties we're having.
Oh, so my video cannot be broadcasted?
No, ma'am. Just the audio will be heard, but not the video.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Shireen Del Souza, 6030 Tapestry. And today, I wanted to talk about, I had a video about how we really need to make an environment conducive to exercise in Corpus Christi, and, you know, protected bike paths really add to that. I read a lot about, you know, having good habits, because I tried to do that in my personal life. And habit experts from Duke University, I read especially, and corroborated by other habit experts, say things like, you know, if you want to exercise, you put your exercise clothes out the night before, or even your plate size, if you have smaller plate size, you can reduce your eating by 22%. So I was thinking, like, with urban planning, this is applicable, because I've seen statistics about how protected bike paths can increase ridership from 21% to even 171%. That's a statistics from NACTO, the National Association of Transportation, City Transportation Officials. And I'm going to send an email out with all of this cited. And another thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, Corpus Christi, you know, they have the wide sidewalks, they, they, the city planners like to call that a protected, a bike path, but it isn't. That's why we're not seeing cyclists. That's why we're not seeing cyclists out there, because they don't follow the Federal Highway Administration's design guides. Paint on the road, of course, is not a protected bike path. So if we follow these design guides, we're going to see an increase of ridership. And when we increase ridership, and cycling especially, we have less congestion, improved health. I'm sorry, I'm outside, I was hoping that you would play the video, so. Yeah, so just please look into that health aspect of it. You know, like, we always see statistics about how your other countries, they're, America is having, they're more sedentary and obese, the diabetes, the heart problems that come with it. These are very serious problems, and we can solve it from the, from urban planning. Simple gesture like just some concrete, you know, that that's good for 50 years. You're going to be helping generations to come, many people in the population. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Delsus. Next, we have Melissa Samora.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Melissa, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Melissa Samora, 454 Louisiana, Corpus Christi, Texas. My comments are in relation to water. First, going back to the drought contingency plan, wondering when the other listening sessions will take place for the other council members in their respective districts? Where are the public's recorded comments from the last session? And how will they be incorporated into editing the overall plan? Going back to the CC Polymers meeting, which I attended, I did notice and take offense and felt really concerned about Mike Murphy's presence and how it was very inappropriate that he spoke on behalf of his position for the CC Polymers discharge permit to be not for the best interest of the residents and the health and well-being of our bays. And why he chose to speak on behalf of the water department and his current position for siding with a private corporation like CC Polymers, that is very concerning, is factual. There was recording of that meeting, and so I please advise you all as city manager to go back, look at that, and come up with corrective action. Next, water concern, going in with the Flint Hills oil spill. What is the most recent update? I was involved with a beach cleanup over at North Beach this past Saturday with a couple of other organizations. We found at least two cups of the paraffin wax washing up on North Beach, trying to warn people who had children out there that had this stuff stuck to their feet and hands. I already made a comment too and sent a report into Flint Hills for their report incident number and also to the TGLO, but I just want you all to have this on your radar to put more pressure on Flint Hills to provide more information on how the cleanup is progressing, how the spill happened, and what is going to be done to inform and warn the citizens of Corpus Christi and also people who are visiting of the safety concerns of having this on their feet and hands, possible ingestion through swimming and also through ingestion of fish that may be eating this material. What are the toxicological issues with this? The public deserves to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samora. Mayor, the next person is Lisa Bacholt. She is a non-resident. Okay, and if you're here, Ms. Bacholt, you have a minute to speak today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Lisa Bacholt, and I do reside in Kingsville, Texas. I've been involved in rescue and live release coordination in this area for many years. I do help in my own community, but I do not live in a bubble. I live, work, and play throughout the coastal bend, with a large majority of my time spent in Corpus Christi, enjoying all it has to offer. Towards that end, I assist other shelters and communities in our area, and I became actively engaged in assisting Corpus Christi Animal Care Services in its live release efforts back in 2015. I was honored last year to be asked by Mayor Ojeda to be part of an ad hoc committee tasked with the process of making recommendations to this commission with regard to a much-needed solution to the city's overwhelming stray problem. It is truly time for city leaders to step up and show the entire coastal bend that this issue is important and a priority. I would like to take a moment to recognize and thank the employees of CCACS, as well as our mayor for her vision and leadership on this important issue. It was a privilege to work on this project, Mayor, thank you. Many hours and a lot of research, thought, and due diligence went into crafting this verbiage. I urge this commission to take a stand, put a stop to Corpus Christi stray problem, and please support the proposed spay neuter breeding ordinance before you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Elizabeth Oric. Ms. Oric?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Elizabeth Oric. I'm here on behalf of Best Friends Animal Society in support of humane pet sales piece of the proposed animal code update. More animals are dying in Texas shelters than in any other state in the U.S. In 2021, nearly 597,000 dogs and cats entered Texas shelters, and more than 61,000 were killed, primarily at taxpayer expense. These were not unadoptable pets in need of humane euthanasia, but wonderful dogs and cats of all ages, breeds, sizes, and personalities who simply ran out of time to find a home. It just doesn't make sense to keep importing animals into Texas while so many healthy, adoptable dogs and cats are dying for a lack of home. This proposal is a fair and effective way to prevent inhumanly bred pets from being imported into Corpus Christi so that consumers are protected and fewer animals will have to suffer in order to supply the retail pet trade and to relieve the burden on shelters and taxpayers by getting more animals adopted. That's why Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, El Paso, Austin, Fort Worth, and other cities across Texas and the U.S. have enacted these kinds of policies, and we really hope Corpus Christi will join them. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Oric. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes, that concludes all of our public comment. And I really want to thank everyone who, who made comment on, on all subjects. They're all very important, and we do appreciate that. Thank you all, my animal friends, because this is, it is a historic day in, in, in what could be passed today. So thank you for that advocacy. So we're going to go ahead and go back. Councilman Hernandez, does she have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to ask that, Peter, you know, you mentioned something to us electronically on the COVID vaccination for prospective firefighter cadets. I was wondering if you could share that with us.
I can, Councilman, yes. So as you know, Councilman, we've been working with Driscoll Hospital for about 90 days. We, our paramedics go through clinical training as part of their regimen of becoming a firefighter, a paramedic. And so they do practical work, actual work on patients in three hospitals here. Driscoll, SPON, and then the medical center, Corpus Christi Medical Center. Driscoll is a pediatric hospital, as we know, so there's some important skills that are learned at the hospital on, on patients, live, actual patients. So as part of their training, which includes classroom training, practical training in the field, they do clinical work at any one of those three hospitals, including all three, though, especially the pediatric, because we do take care of little children in the EMS world and EMS business. So we're at the behest of the hospitals in terms of can we go into the hospital as a, in this case, somewhat of a volunteer or, you know, a professional in training. Driscoll Hospital has had a policy of no exemptions in terms of vaccination. So if one of their employees, if one of our paramedics in training, even a volunteer, wanted to go into the hospital and be engaged in the actual area where the patients are, you needed to have a, you need to have a COVID vaccination. The other two hospitals, I'm going to go back to Driscoll in a moment. The other two hospitals do allow an exemption process, meaning an applicant or a person can put in a request for an exemption to the COVID vaccine because of either a medical or a religious belief, and the hospital has to approve that. So that practice has been in place for SPON and the CCMC, Corpus Christi Medical Center. Driscoll has had not, they haven't had that, that practice. So knowing that this is a concern for some of our paramedics that want to become firefighters, or some of our cadets, I mean, that want to become firefighter paramedics, we've been working with Driscoll since this was brought to our attention about 90 days ago. Just today, like maybe an hour ago, Driscoll finally got word from their corporate headquarters that they will allow an exemption process. And so we're going to work with Driscoll then to get that finalized. They had told us verbally, maybe around Christmas time, I believe, or shortly thereafter, but there was nothing in writing, and we, we wanted something in writing to make sure in case there's some type of an issue. We wanted some legal safeguard with a written document. So we think we have that now. Today, they notified us right around the same time the people that came in to speak, were speaking, that they would allow that. We've been checking pretty rigorously a couple of times a week. Deputy or Acting Chief Richie Quintero has been working with them and checking in about twice a week or so. So today, part of that check-in, we finally got word that they'll allow the exemption process. It's important to note that it's not an absolute, so a cadet that wants to work for the fire department in the training program, if they don't want to get a COVID vaccination, would put in a petition to Driscoll Hospital, not to the city and not to Del Mar. It would be to Driscoll Hospital, and Driscoll Hospital would have to approve that because of their stated medical or religious belief. So that should clear up the issue in terms of at least having a process. We know there is one in the two hospitals that are not, that are not pediatric in nature, that being SPON and CCMC. And now with this pediatric hospital, we'll have that process.
Okay, thank you, Peter, and please keep us informed when we get that information. Also, be aware, in the information that our, our government relations person has provided us, it is number 28 in the Lieutenant Governor's priorities to have similar legislation as a governor's executive order to prevent that from, from happening going forward. So I think we may have some legal aspects to that in the future.
Great. Okay, good, thank you for pointing that out, Councilman. Yes, sir, thanks for helping us on it as well. I know you worked with, with Driscoll Director, Board of Directors to help us move it along. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, you want to go ahead and finish?
Okay, yes, ma'am, so we have one more item. We're going to go over the first quarter financial report for the city. And given the technical situation we have here, we did pass out a new presentation for you this morning. Councilman Hernandez and council members, there was a copy anyway in the book, you know, your agenda material. But use this one that we're passing out just in case there are any updates over the weekend. In the agenda material, there's also the actual report, which has this cover here. Let me just hold it up so it can. So the actual report, which is numerous pages, is in the agenda material. So this presentation here is, is our first quarter financial report for the period of October 1 through December 31, 2022. That's our first quarter of the fiscal year. And just as a note, the figures presented today are unaudited, but we have pretty good confidence in them from our budget and finance teams. And just as a reminder to the council and the community, our financial policies that city council approves annually, as well as the city charter, requires that the city manager provide quarterly updates to the city council on our financial status, and that is keeping in line with that today, this presentation. So when we turn to slide three, we'll go over the biggest fund, the most primary one, our general fund, and we're going to go over the revenues first. So this table has several columns. The annual budget, all 12 months revenue is 307 million. The staff does, does some rigor and analysis, not just dividing by 12, but kind of looking at what would we expect to get in in that first quarter. We know that property tax, a lot of property tax payments are made in that first quarter. And for the first quarter, expected revenues was 115 million, and the actuals that came in over the first three months was just under that, 114.5 million. And so about 500,000 less. We're not overly worried by it. It's primarily from property tax receipts. That'll come in as the months progress, in January, as an example, funds came in over the budgeted amount. Our sales tax, just to report on that, is strong. For the first three months, we collected 400,000 more than what we planned to have collected. And all three months amounts were actually over the budgeted amount from the, for prior year actuals, I should say, not the budgeted amount, the prior year actuals. So first three months of sales tax better than last three years, last three months from the last year. And so that's the story in the revenues. When we turn to the next slide four, our expenditures, we have a $340 million general fund budget that city council approved for the fiscal year. And similarly, we look at the first quarter planned expenditures. It's not just a divide by 12, but kind of setting some expectations of what the departments will spend. That first quarter budgeted amount was 98 million. And we actually spent for the first three months, 77, close to 78 million. So that's a variance of about 20 million. And part of that is explained from the carryovers. There's still some one-time projects that are being finished up. So we carried into the budget 11.3 million. And that's some of that variance of unspent money. That equates to about 21% not spent, and that's consistent with what we have generally seen in the first quarters in the past couple of fiscal years. So the goal, of course, is to put the money into production, to provide those capital one-time improvements and services. And we continue to work on that with the departments. When we turn to page five, these are a reminder of our budget initiatives. So we had a robust budget development season this past summer with the city council. And to, so in the end, the council approved 144 budget initiatives that totaled 43 million. And just want to give you a status report that of the 144, 120, 124 of those are on schedule or completed. So the departments are making good progress, either completing what we said we would do or they're on schedule. Should remind the council that for all the initiatives, the departments develop an implementation plan. So we know, the department heads know, the executive leadership knows what's the timeframe to implement these things. So 124 initiatives on schedule. There's about 20 initiatives that are behind schedule. And so it's, it's not too bad, but we want all things to be on schedule. So we're working with the departments on recovery plans to see how do we get those back on track. Just as a reminder, this budget really provided a lot to the community, including 24 additional firefighter positions, 25 additional police positions, equipment in our fire department to include aerial apparatus trucks, a Bearcat armored vehicle for our police department. We had more positions in our right-of-way management team and our street operations, and we had more projects, five pedestrian mobility projects. There's a Cole Park Pier, Cole Park Plaza shade structure, so we can use that plaza more. More lifeguards for our Gulf and North Beaches. Our animal care pilot program for additional spay neuter, that's on the agenda for today, $250,000 initiative. And, and a few other, a few other initiatives as well. Okay, so that's the general fund on our several other primary funds, our hotel occupancy tax fund. We have an annual revenue budget of 17.6 million. The first quarter expected revenues were 30, 3.8 million, and we actually collected 4 million, so about 200,000 better, which is pretty good. So our hotel industry, visitor industry continues to stay strong. We appreciate the work of Brett Otting and his Visit Corpus Christi team and their Board of Directors. We know that they continue to monitor, as do we, the visitor industry. And especially with spring break coming up, that'll be a good barometer of the coming months, including the summer months. So the last two funds are our, our water and wastewater operations. We did great in both of these in terms of revenue collection and spending. So the revenues for the water fund, we expected to collect about 33.8 million for the first quarter, and we actually collected 34 million, so about 400,000 better. Our expenditures are within budget, a little bit of unspent, 13 million, but those will be spent in the coming months. And then in the wastewater fund, we do need to recognize this one here, that the expected revenues were 20.3 million, and we actually collected 20.3 million. So good estimating there on that fund. The expenditures aren't too bad, 20 million is what we thought we would spend in the first quarter. We actually spent 16, so a $4 million variance in the wastewater operation. And then we know our capital budget, our CIP, this is where we do infrastructure work in our community, is very important aspect of our business. And I did want to highlight just the 2020 bond program. The financial report that we provided to council has the complete capital budget update. But in our 2020 bond program, which was passed prior to the 2022 bond program, it had 42 projects. 22 of those projects are completed or under construction. projects. 22 of those projects are completed or under construction. 14 projects will be under construction by May of 2023, this May. And then four additional projects will be under construction by October. Those are bigger, longer lead-type projects. So a pretty good report where half the projects are under construction. Soon, another 14 will be in construction. And then we have two projects that were design-only, and those are currently under design. So everything is underway, in construction, complete, or will be under construction within months. We will be bringing to City Council our annual closeout of our CIP. And so we have bond programs, there's a few projects, there's some certificate of obligation programs in our water, wastewater, revenue debt-funded programs. We look at those annually in closeout accounts that are no longer necessary, the work is done. And we're going to bring that back to council, and I'll explain that a little bit more in the final slide. So the summary for the first quarter is that our general fund revenues are consistent with the projections. Our hotel occupancy tax revenues are a little bit higher than projected. Water and wastewater revenues are better than budgeted, so no issues there. And we have record-setting delivery times in our 2020 bond program. So the next steps include the annual comprehensive financial report for 2022, the prior fiscal year. We'll bring that to council. That'll be in March of 2023. It'll be an audited report of our financials for the prior fiscal year. That's in March. In April, we're going to have the City Council Goal Setting and Budget Setting Workshop, April 6. That'll help us for the next budget. And then our second quarter budget and financial report will be delivered to council in May of 2023. And as I mentioned, we'll also bring the annual CIP closeout in March. So Mayor, that concludes this presentation. The financial report, just for the the community, is more extensive than these slides.
Right.
The city has done a great job over the years to have really good financial reporting.
Yes.
And it's accessible on our website, open to the public, keeping with our commitment to be transparent and open with the community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the council has a copy of that as well.
Yeah, thank you very much for this, Peter. We do have a couple of comments or questions. Councilman Barretta?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, with regard to the the Bond 2020, and I mean, could we, could, I guess, in the form of memo, I hate to create more work, but, you know, I get asked all the time, where are we at on Airport Road? When's that starting? And where are we at on Carl Lane? And I just think that if, I'm sure it's already written down somewhere.
Right.
So if somebody could provide to us the 2020, and if there's a deviation, just update us.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you guys send a ton of memos anyway. That'd be one that I would keep. Anyway, so.
Okay, no problem. We do have it. I'll point it out to you, Councilman. We do have it in our financial report that has the each project and the the construction end date. So I'll work with you on it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And Councilman Hernandez?
Peter, I know it's not part of the quarterly report, but we still haven't updated our outstanding debt obligations on the on the website regarding. I know we're, I guess we're waiting for it to be audited. But if this isn't audited, I mean, we can, we can post, you know, at least where we are on a quarterly basis as to how much debt we have. And because right now, it's listing 2021 as of September 30th, 2021.
Okay.
So we're not providing that information. So.
Okay, we'll look at that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Oh, Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, can you get us a report in the next few days on our hot tax revenue? Can you break out the impact of the STRs with respect to that? Is that possible?
Constance, is that, I'm not sure if it's possible. Do we have the, can we break out the STRs?
To some extent.
To some extent, we can. But we'll see what we can get for you, Councilman.
I just, it would be interesting to see what the impact of that, since we've implemented our new ordinances on STRs, to see how that's impacting the hot tax.
Yeah, it's not 100% absolute or clear, but I think we can, we'll see what we can do to get you some barometer.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And thank you for the report. It's very, very educational and appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to do our board and committee appointments. We have three. Ms. Wirtha?
Yes, ma'am. The first board for your consideration is the Animal Care Advisory Committee. There are five vacancies, and they represent the following preferred but not required categories. Three community at large, one veterinarian, and one welfare slash shelter. There are two requests for reinstatement. We could consider those first. Jarvis Amaya, community at large, and Michelle King, also community at large, they were removed for excessive absences, but they both commit now to attending meetings and are requesting reinstatement.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and reinstate or move to reinstate Jarvis.
Okay.
Amaya, is it Amaya?
Amaya.
Amaya, yeah, do we, is that a motion?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hunter has seconded that.
Okay.
Did you want to vote on that now, or? Sure. Yes, we have a motion and a second to reinstatement. Mr. Amaya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Mr. Suckley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate for the other positions Jackie McCullough, Diana Cardenas, Roland Dominguez, and Amy Cooley.
Who was the first one? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Jackie McCullough.
Okay.
Did you get those, Norman? Jackie McCullough, Diana Cardenas. I'm sorry, the other?
Roland Dominguez and Amy Cooley.
Okay, so we have a motion to nominate those. Mr. Klein, is your light on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Go ahead. I'll wait for a second to the motion.
Okay, do we have a second for the slate?
Second.
Well, he, oh, it's, Adam, you're right, it was a nomination. There's no need, yeah. Okay, so is there, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make additional nominations.
Okay. Oh, that's what, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Michelle King to be reappointed. She's a veterinarian in the area here. Would be ideal on this committee. I know that her time is limited because of her veterinary business, but she would be ideal on this committee. I'd also like to nominate Shane Gleason. He's doing extensive work out at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi with the cat population out there. I'd like to nominate him for this committee as well.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. And Councilman, did you have, is he going to say something?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other veterinarians on here besides, King is the current veterinarian, correct?
No. Well, she's community at large, but she is a veterinarian. Mr. Klein is correct. So she could.
And she's the only veterinarian we have on?
That, yes, who identified that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll close nominations. And Ms. Wirtha, we will start.
We'll vote for four, I guess.
We'll vote for four, yeah.
Okay. Another question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Pusley. Go ahead.
Does our guidelines for that committee require that we have a veterinarian?
No, sir.
It does not?
They're preferred but not required categories.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with what does that bring to the table?
Well, yeah. A lot of knowledge. Okay, well, let's, let's do this. We'll start with, to my left, Ms. Wirtha.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Left, my left.
Sorry, the other left, yes. Mr. Suckley, go ahead, please.
So is King going to be a reinstatement? Are we going to do that separately? Or are we going to just proceed with picking four?
King's new.
Okay.
So you go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so she was nominated, so we're going to just include her in the nomination list.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So. Four.
There's five slots. So there was a motion and a second. There was approval of reinstating Mr. Amaya. And now we have four slots. Ms. King was, Dr. King, I guess, was nominated to, as a, was nominated. So she's one of the nominees on the list.
And Gleason.
Mm-hmm. So starting with Mr. Suckley, if you're ready, we could pick four.
All right. Lot of great applicants or folks, and so it's certainly a tough decision. But McCullough, Cardenas, Gleason, and King.
Okay. Dr. Klein?
I'll go with Gleason, King, Cardenas, and Dominguez.
Okay. Mr. Roy?
First of all, I'm ecstatic that District One person's volunteering. So anyway, I want to start with Cardenas, McCullough, Gleason, and King.
Okay. Mr. Barretta?
McCullough, Cardenas, Dominguez, and Cooley.
Let's see. McCullough, Cardenas, King, and Cooley.
Mr. Hunter?
Is, was there an explanation why she missed?
Who?
Seven out of the nine meetings?
Ms. King? Her explanation, there was miscommunication at the, on her initial appointment on the time and dates of the meetings. There was some kind of confusion. But once she was made aware of those times and understood them, she then did participate.
How, how many, what is one term? Two years, two and a half years, three years?
One full term is three years for this committee. Attendance is based on one term year, right?
And Mr. Amaya has a lot of reasons why he can't make some of the meetings due to physical issues. I understand that. And he has helped a lot from the same position. Is this the same scenario for Ms. King? Because I think if she can't make it as a vet, and she can't make it. But it would be great to have that experience on there as well.
I can only give you the reasons that were, that she provided for the record in writing. Those were the reasons she provided, what I stated.
All right. McCullough, is it Cardenas or?
Cardenas, it is, yeah.
Okay. Dominguez and Cooley.
Okay.
Well, this is truly tough. McCullough, Cardenas, Dominguez, and Ms. Cooley, who lives in?
District One.
District One. And I, too, am thrilled we get a District One representative on that committee.
Just one? All right.
No, actually, there's no representatives on this board from District Five.
Ms. Campos?
I'm going to go ahead and go with King, Diana Cardenas, Shane Gleason, and Dominguez.
Okay.
So it looks like we have Cardenas, McCullough, and Dominguez.
Cardenas, McCullough.
And King, right?
Dominguez and King.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, let's move on.
So moving on to Committee for Persons with Disabilities, there are five vacancies. There are two individuals seeking reappointment. There are Olivia Allen and Jennifer Scott, and their attendance rates are in your packets. So is there any interest in reappointing those individuals?
Yeah, motion to reappoint.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
That leaves us with three vacancies.
Sorry?
That leaves us with three vacancies to fill. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any nominations? I'm going to open up for nominations for three. Is that correct, Ms. Wirtha? Three vacancies?
Yes, ma'am. There's three open positions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we did have some nomin, I'm sorry, recommendations earlier. I'd like to submit those. That was Dr. Ashley Voight, I think.
Yes.
And I'm so sorry, I didn't write them down. I know it was Kelsey, what's her last name?
Dahlbeck.
Dahlbeck.
Dahlbeck. And then Flores.
Flores.
Sandra Flores. As recommendations from the Chair of this committee. So do we have a sec? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm nominating those. Are there any other nominations?
It's Ashley Voight, V-O-G-G-T, Kelsey Dahlbeck, and Sandra Flores.
Sandra Flores, yeah. Okay. I will then close nominations. And does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to appoint the three?
Second.
Okay, great. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Okay. Last committee is the Corpus Christi Downtown Management District. There are two vacancies representing the following categories. And it's two property owners. So per the Texas Local Government Code, directors are chosen through the recommendation of the board, of the DMD board, and the approval of the council. The Downtown Management District is recommending the new appointments of Ben Molina and Adrian Trevino.
Yeah, I nominate those two.
Okay, perfect. All right. So there's been a nomination for Ben Molina and Adrian Trevino per the recommendation of the DMD by Ms. Campos.
Okay, is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Lopez and Wildon.
So one thing about this one.
This is a reappoint.
It has to be nominations per statute. The nominations come from, the recommendations come from the DMD. If you were to select someone else, it would, it would have to go back to the DMD for approval, recommendation.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to approve the DMD's recommendations.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Who?
She doesn't live in St. She's not a registered voter.
Who is it?
I'm sorry.
Adrian.
She's not?
She used to be.
So she's a non-resident? Okay, then how can the DMD recommend her for downtown representation?
Because she's an agent, employee, or tenant of the, of the district.
Okay, so she has a business there?
Yes, sir.
She represents Water Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
She represents Water. So she was the appoint.
She's the recommendation of the DMD.
Representative of Water Street.
Okay.
So, and she works for them.
I'm fine with that.
Can we vote on the vote?
Yes.
Because I'm the person who got our application changed to require how many years they've lived here, whether or not they're registered voter in that. If I'm that person, then I'd be going against my own philosophy.
Right, the.
Sorry, my microphone is not on.
Yeah, this is not a city board, per se, so some of those requirements don't apply to this one as far as residency.
Okay, we just keep that on there just for the information.
Well, and I think in.
And the other boards, yeah, it does matter. Residency does matter for state boards.
In all fairness, this really does come to this dais as a courtesy, because it isn't something that we have to approve. Their board, and Ms. Barretta Mason is with us today, their board is able to appoint. But I will say, we will, you know, have some conversations about your concerns, Mr. Hunter, because they're valid. They're valid. And the very people on this board, this particular board, any board, they make very critical decisions about downtown. So I would invite you all, if you have concerns, we do need to let Ms. Barretta Mason know, and I have actually done so myself regarding some of these things. So moving forward, I think we'll have some conversations on that. So we've got the nomination, or we have a motion, is that correct, Mr. Pusley?
I did, yes. And we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Yes, no.
Okay, who said no?
She is a very, she, she knows what she's doing on here. It's just.
Yeah, no, I understand your position. So we have two no's, Dr. Klein and Councilman Hunter.
Well, I'll go with yes, because I've got to support Councilman Molina in the past, and he's done a lot for that area.
So he's voting yes for Molina and no for Trevino.
Well, because it's one vote. Make up your mind, sir.
I'll go yes.
Okay, yes.
With a hint of no. All righty, we're done. Oh, you're on record? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we're finished. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Wirtha. Okay, so what I'd like to do before we go to lunch, so Councilman Pusley can have his lunch on time. Okay, so what I'd like to do before we go to lunch, so Councilman Pusley can have his lunch on time. What I'd like to do, because we have item number nineteen, we have our intergovernmental relations person on the phone, which is Wendy, Wendy Herman, along with our representative from Focus Advocacy, which is Brandon, and they are kind of pressed for time, being that they're in Austin. I'd like to take item number nineteen, if we can, and, and take care of that.
That's great, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Elsie, were you doing any comments? Okay, Elsie Borchardt, our Assistant Aviation Director on Special Assignment, will lead this item up. The PowerPoint presentation system, according to Peter Collins, is working now. So we can, yes.
Great. Mayor and Council, good afternoon, Elsie Borchardt. And we do have Wendy, as you mentioned, B.O.F. today, along with our consultant Focus Advocacy, who are working very hard right now at the legislative session in Austin. So today I will provide some background on this project. Just a brief recap on how we got to this item, and then some key benchmark that we're working on. As you may remember, on March twenty, twenty-two, the City Council approved a contract with Honda Strategic Partners to conduct a feasibility study with economic impact. The report analyzed the potential for a convention center hotel, a mixed-use entertainment district, a needs assessment for the American Bank Center, and a convention center. In January of this year, the City Council was also presented with the results of such study. And at that time, Council has instructed staff to go ahead and proceed to add a resolution for this legislative session. Since then, a financial advisor has been selected and is now complete, and a bond council selection for this project is also complete. As we move into step three, on the plan of finance, the analysis and model is being worked on, along with multiple meetings with bond council, our financial advisor, our legislative consultant, and Honda Strategic Partners to develop a project schedule and the plan of finance. In early summer, around May timeframe, staff will bring back before City Council the results of the plan of finance with some funding sources that have been identified. We will be able to provide the project schedule, along with some milestones, and provide recommendations for this project. Today, the support, the proposed support for legislation before you would allow the city to create a project finance zone in Corpus Christi. The project finance zone is a legislative concept that was done in 2013 to provide state-funded financial assistance for convention center expansion and the renovation in the cities such as Dallas and Fort Worth. The project finance zone would redirect the existing state taxes, such as hot, sales, and the mixed beverage, generated in the incremental hotel associated revenues from the state to Corpus Christi. Support of this legislation would allow a cumulative estimate of over sixty-four million to be, under the current law, will be collected locally and transferred to the state, but now will be redirected to the city of Corpus Christi for qualified projects. Today, staff recommends the adoption of this resolution for the city of Corpus Christi during this legislative session. And as I said before, we have Wendy Herman, who's B.O.F., and I'll pass it on to her, along with Brandon with Focus Advocacy. And, oh, sorry, and I would also like to recognize that we have available B.O.F. as well, our bond council, with McCullough, Parkes, and Horton, Clay Binford, also our financial advisor, specialized public finance, Victor Quiroga, and Honda Strategic Partners, Rob Hunton.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions? Councilman Pusley? Your, your mic's not on.
Elsie, in terms of the sixty-four million cumulative, over what period of time is that?
That's during the course of the allowable time, which is thirty years. And we'll go into more detail as we proceed in this presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is, are we done with the presentation?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I'm so sorry. Apologize. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Wendy.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I am here with Brandon Agamillion. He is our expert on this, working with Focus Advocacy. And just to give a little background, Brandon is an expert on economic development. He's been working in the state of Texas here legislatively for over twenty years. He was actually a former Director of Government Relations for the city of Fort Worth, and actually wrote the original bill that established the code that this resolution, we're trying to add our name to this resolution. So he really knows the legislative process really well. And so I wanted to make sure that he was on the call to have any questions you guys might have about the process of, so if anybody has any questions about any of that.
Mayor, hey, it's Brandon. Mayor and Council, it's Brandon. Don't want to belabor the discussion. So I, I really just make myself available to answer any questions about how this works. It's sort of the, the technical level, if y'all want to go through these slides. If y'all have got other stuff you, you want to get on to, then I'm happy to, to just let y'all get on to voting.
Okay, we'll let you know if we have any questions. Thank you, Brandon.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Elsie.
Yes, and like I said, and Brandon can go into more detail on these, but the existing project finance legislation, it is under the tax code, and it does have specific qualified projects that are available, like, for example, the convention center facility, the multipurpose arena. These are some of the items that the existing code allows for this increment base to be utilized for. In the zone-
Elsie?
Yes, Brandon.
It's Brandon. I'm, I'm sorry, if we're gonna run through slides, I'm, I'm happy to do them. I don't want to put you in a, in a, in a spot of laying out the, the law. I know you can do it, but I, I just, I'll jump in here real quick. You know, what's important for y'all to know about that previous slide is that this, this does apply to convention center facilities. It really was used in Fort Worth for what you see as Part B there, which is a, an arena. It's how they built the Dicky's Arena. But in Dallas, they used it for the, to, to help with the expansion of the K. Bailey Hutchison Convention Center Facility, which is how we'd be using it. It's important that everybody sees that part in, in Part B, number two, the, the little, little i, two, that there is a statutory requirement that at least forty percent of the project cost is contributed by the private sector. I don't think that will be a problem. I think that's an incredibly low threshold, but I do want y'all to, to note that that's in there. We can go to the next slide if y'all, if y'all want to. The zone that this section establishes is something that you, as the City Council, will actually establish. The current law says that it, it can't be more than three miles. Your zone can't be more than three miles. Doesn't have to be three miles, but it, it can be more than three miles. And as was noted earlier, that zone can't continue in effect for more than thirty years. Again, you don't have to go that long, but the, the law gives you that long. What's interesting about that three-mile radius, and we talked about this at the staff level yesterday, is that because your project geographically is situated so close to the bay, your, a, a significant chunk of your three-mile radius goes into the ocean, where there are obviously no hotels. And so there's a, a sort of a, a bit of this that will go unused under the current law unless we do something different. Next slide, please. What was on our previous slide is that this is an incremental financing mechanism, just like a, a, a TIF, a Tax Increment Finance Zone. It's the same concept. You take your base year when y'all designate that zone. That's year one. Whatever is being collected in that zone at that day continues to stay with the state. And then for the next up to thirty years, whatever, whatever increment grows above that base year is what you can keep as the city. And that includes the state hot and the state sales taxes, and the mixed beverage tax. And it is, you know, the, those revenues, those taxes that are collected from all the hotels located in the zone. So this is a, this is a different tool than, than the other hotel financing tool that you already qualify for that only collects the taxes from the one hotel, the new hotel. This collects the taxes from all the hotels. Next slide, please. And then what's, you know, I think the most important is, is for y'all to understand what you can then do with that money if we pass this legislation. And what the statute says is that you can pledge that money for the payment of bonds or other obligations for the acquisition or the leasing, construction, improvement, enlarging, and equip, and equipping of the qualified project. And so this is critical for the city to, to understand that, you know, you, there are things you can use this money for, and there are things you can't use this money for. And it, it is, when you actually get a developer at the table to talk about building this vision, the implementation of this law will be very critical. And I've, I've certainly seen other clients of mine, you know, mess this up and, and misunderstand what they can and can't do with this tool and this money. So in my opinion, passing the bill is what it is. Once we get the bill passed, it then, and, and if we get the bill passed, what's really critical is helping y'all implement this in the correct way. Next slide. I thought maybe the last slide, I'm not sure.
That was the last slide.
That's it, that's it for me. And so, any questions about how this law works?
Councilman Pusley?
Okay, it's Brandon, right?
Brandon.
Brandon, okay, this, this, Councilman Mike Pusley. So my questions are, this, this money will come back to, the sixty-four million dollar maximum will come back to the city over a thirty-year period. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. And the sixty-four is an estimate, you know, that's not baked into the law. So, but whatever is collect, that increment that is collected in that zone, that comes back to the city for y'all to use for the, the payment of bonds.
That amount could increase or decrease over a period of time based on the activity within the zone.
Performance.
Okay.
That's right.
Well, it just seems, I mean, that's only two million a year. It just seems to me like that's not gonna help us do very much.
If, if I might, this is Rob Hunton, not sure if y'all can see or hear me, but just know that that estimate of an incremental cumulative of sixty-four million was the most conservative. It, it did not estimate many new hotels or anything like that, and very conservative increases. When we add in the new headquarters hotel of, you know, six hundred keys, and an, an additional two to three hundred room select service hotel, and we had only counted actually the hot taxes, we did not count the sales and mixed beverage. When we do that, even if we subtract off the first ten years, our new estimates actually are more than double that, at a hundred and thirty-one million. So it, it is a, an incredibly valuable tool that, you know, you, you would have no reason not to ask to, to be written into.
No, I, I understand that part. I'm just, I'm just thinking in terms of what we want to do to our facility and how that's gonna help us. And I guess the other question is, so this will allow us to use that money on existing facilities, is that correct? Because I saw a lot of language about new facilities, but nothing about existing facilities.
Yeah, new related to the convention center, like if we did an expansion.
Right.
On the convent, it has to be at the convention center, the American Bank Center.
I realize that, but, but if you go back and read the language on the slides they presented to us, it doesn't really say that.
Can you just confirm that, Rob, or, or snapper, it's both?
Yeah, so, so- Dallas didn't realize they were written into this, and so when we worked on the new three billion dollar convention center there, which is actually technically a renovation and expansion, they, they are able to use their newly established PFZ for that project, which is also an expansion and renovation. So even though it's mostly new, it, it can be for either. And Fort Worth is going through the process now, certainly only doing an expansion renovation. They are not building new, and they are able to use the PFZ for that.
The, the law says, I think what is presented on the slide is a project, a, a, a qualified project, which is the technical term of art, means a convention center facility. And so it doesn't designate whether it's new or it is existing. But then later in the law, it talks, is that other slide presented that I said is, is so critical. And this is where usually myself and bond council, you know, spend a lot of quality time together, is making sure that we're using the money for the authorized uses. And, and it says it can be used for, you know, the construction or, or renovation of a qualified project. And a qualified project is a convention center.
Okay. And this is Clay Binford, I'd like to confirm that as well. Within the statute, you'll also see, and we're at a very preliminary stage of this process, which is good, we have the ability, or actually the requirement, to adopt a capital improvement plan for expanding an existing convention center, which is within the law. And what we would be doing, and as Brandon said, the implementation is critical to make sure that we are encompassing everything that we need to encompass on the, the basis and existence of a functioning convention center that we're looking to renovate, expand, and, and improve, to improve the city's overall convention business. I'd also just like to one, supplement one thing that Brandon talked about, the three-mile radius. And that slide where it showed the approximately fifty to sixty percent of the zone being over water. We did talk about some suggestions yesterday as to how we might be able to bring that inland so that we can replicate what is done in other places, understanding that that complicates an already complicated process with the legislative cycle and considering the bill. But we are working on some options to try and mirror what is done in the other jurisdiction where this is in place.
Okay, so, and finally, my last question is, this legislation exists today, or is there any modifications being made to this or proposed for this?
This exists today. Like I said, in two other cities in Texas.
Right.
And the support that we're asking today of council is to mimic, following those steps down and continue the process to introduce a bill similar.
Is there any, is there any proposals in current legislation, Wendy, that, to make any changes or modification to this existing legislation?
From the other, from the other cities, you mean?
And ours, yeah, the answer is yes.
From anybody.
Yeah, Councilman, the answer is yes. One of the, one of the, one of them is the radius, the three-mile radius. That's how it's written today, and as one of the speakers said, that would put us in the water. So we want to take the equivalent area that that equals and see if we can shape it dif-
Move it inland?
Right, shape it differently. It wouldn't be any greater than the three-mile radius in terms of maybe square miles or acres or whatever. But obviously, the water's not gonna help us in terms of revenue, so we want to develop different geographic boundaries. That would be one change.
Unless we build a new teehead.
Right.
I would like to point out also that Corpus Christi, this body is not the only ones that are looking at either implementing this type of incentive tools in their toolbox. Other cities are already doing the same thing. Or even the existing other cities that have this legislation is looking at utilizing it. Because the state does provide a lot of funding mechanisms for the use of convention centers and tourism.
No, I, it's free money. I think free money is a great ideal.
We just want it.
And I would like to, if you allow us, just go over two more slides or so. Rob has some really good data to provide. There's been a lot of, a lot of work and analysis in this as we're continuing the process.
Okay.
Rob, if you'd like to continue, I think we, if you can go through this slide real quick.
Sure, yeah, as long as the slides pop up and I can see those slides. I'm not seeing the slides, so.
It's a three-mile radius map.
Perfect, okay. So, yeah, as you'll see here, within- So, yeah, as you'll see here, within three miles of the existing convention center, there's about twenty-one, twenty-two hundred hotel rooms across twenty hotels. However, if you wanted to go out to where the other big bank of hotels are, of course, along the beach and along the island, you know, that's seventeen miles away. So, so the idea that there, that the others have been suggesting that, hey, if we can, if we can make this not a circle, but some other sort of a shape that allows us to capture those other hotels, obviously would increase the benefit. But as I mentioned, Fort Worth has been using this tool for their arena since 2013 is when they established their PFZ and have been building up revenues that helped them fund Dicky's Arena. And now they're moving on to their next project, which is the convention center. And they actually have two points with two, three-mile radius because one is at the arena and one is at the convention center. Yours is both, yours are both in the same place. Dallas, as I mentioned, is using this tool as well. We can go to the next slide. So here, this just gives you a nice visual to help on, to explain and understand how this works. So it's essentially like a TERS district with property tax, but this is with state hotel tax. So right now, state hotel taxes are, you know, doing what they're doing. And when you set the baseline, which, you know, if you get approved for this, I would assume you'd want to set that baseline as soon as possible, likely this fall or end of the year. And so then any incremental state hot tax that's not already pledged to the beach, so four percent out of six would go into this new project finance zone kitty. And those grow over time. And these were the, these are, these are the total hotel rooms, excuse me, total hotel revenues above that, what we estimate to be the baseline. And so this is, this was before we assumed that we would be building, you know, two larger full-service type hotels that would, of course, change the game considerably. So this is the conservative model. And if we go to the next slide, that may, if there is one more slide, that may give us a sense, yes. So then this is the state hot tax, four percent out of the six that you're able to capture and contribute to the project finance zone kitty. And you can see there that it starts, of course, off very small because you have to grow it. But cumulatively, and again, this was our conservative model, by the end, you're, you're adding, you know, five-plus million dollars a year in state hot tax redirection back to project bonds, essentially. So the, the conservative estimate, if you didn't build any new hotels and it was just a standard increase in average daily rate and maybe a couple of small hotels here and there, your value of sixty-four million dollars in new revenues. But based on the numbers we ran just this past week, we're more than double that when we bring in a convention headquarters hotel, another big select service hotel, and some of the other value capture that we have. Because any state sales tax and state mixed beverage tax in these hotels, and of course, that's gonna occur in full-service hotels, select service and limited service hotels don't sell mixed beverages often and they don't have a lot of things that are sales taxable, but large full-service hotels are. And so we do have the model from the six hundred room Omni in Fort Worth to look at, and we run those numbers, we track those numbers, and that generates a nice little additional amount from this mixed sales and mixed beverage taxes. So all in all, your range, from what we can tell at this point, would be conservatively sixty-four million in cumulative state redirected revenues, up to a hundred and thirty-one million over the thirty-year PFZ.
And I'll skip to the, that last slide, Rob. The incremental that, once you put all the different tax bases, the hot, which is at four percent currently, the mixed beverage is at eight-point-twenty-five, again, this is all state, and the state sales tax is at six-point-twenty-five. Those are all being generated today. The state is collecting from the local hotels and entities, all these funds and going to the state. What we're asking today in this legislative item is your support to ask the state to redirect all those state funds to Corpus Christi, to stay in Corpus Christi. That's the last slide.
Mayor. Okay, Councilman Suckly.
Thank you, Mayor. We've already, between Rob's clarification and Councilman Pusley's comments and things, already addressed some of the things that I was gonna mention, but I'm completely supportive of this. Like Councilman Pusley said, if it ends up bringing free money, if we're redirecting what would have been going to the state back to us to help us accomplish our, be a piece of the financing or funding for, for what we want to do, then, then great. I just wanted to double, triple check that as we continue to look at adjusting that three-mile radius, that we're not in any way cannibalizing, taking away what could be, you know, used here, redirected, other, other places, or is already being utilized, that it's all mixed beverage, sales tax, all that is truly a hundred percent going to the state and we're not at all cannibalizing that, taking it away from other, other means that would be staying in our community.
Correct.
But I'm completely supportive of it and I hope we do support it because it is, appears to be free money. So, and the last thing I will mention is, you know, Rob did go more in-depth on the sixty-four million and could double, is seeing those assumptions we're using for whatever that funding potentially looks like is gonna be critical. I seriously doubt we're gonna find somebody that's gonna come in and build a six hundred key, full-service convention center hotel off the bat. Maybe they will, but.
Councilman, do not be negative about that.
Sorry.
I, that's not, no, it is happening. Oh, God. Spoken like a true banker.
But I, I think it's gonna happen and I just don't think six hundred key, but anyways, Rob's the expert, that team's the expert, we'll rely on him to help craft those assumptions we use.
Yes, we will, we will not rely on you.
Absolutely.
Goodness.
Councilman, you, you, your hunch is correct, if, if I may, and I'll, I'll keep my words brief. But, yeah, and Mayor, don't worry, we've got a plan.
Thank you.
So, yeah, these convention headquarters hotels, as we know, typically, I mean, they cost a lot and they're typically fifty percent subsidized. However, one of the things we didn't come before you today to discuss because you already have it in your toolbox, we are just going to ensure through our bond folks and others that we do have the full measure of this tool. There is a ten-year rebate tool that are these same taxes that, that you're already written in for, for convention and headquarter type hotels. And so that's the, that hotel's actual hot tax at the state level, the sales tax and the mixed beverage. And so the idea there is, there is a thousand-foot radius there that if, say, our mixed-use district is connected physically and say, if we have a second hotel that's physically connected to the convention center and the headquarters hotel, and they're all physically connected within a thousand feet, we may be able to recoup the state sales and mixed beverage and hotel tax from all of those elements, which you can imagine, and we have run the numbers, is quite substantial. And so those, we are not double counting those monies and we are not assuming that we get those yet, but you are written into that HB four-three-four-seven already. And so there, there are, there, there are some other tools out there that you have to help make the headquarters hotel happen.
Thank you. Councilman Banera.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, okay, so I, I, I think that question was just answered, my question was just answered the, the next explanation. So a qualified project, I'm just understanding it's very broad, is it for the improvement of the convention center? So is that to include, if that includes a hotel, then does that include the, an incentive for the hotel? Or the, does that mean?
Two separate things.
Okay, so, so the funds can be used for a hotel, how?
The funds, the funds under the program come back from the state and you can use them to pay off your bonds or any other obligations that you have. That obligation could be a three-eighty agreement, this could be certificates of obligation, they could, they could come in any number of ways, and/or it can be used to directly reimburse the city if y'all spent, you know, out of, out of pocket cash on anything within, that is, that's qualified, you know, within the project. So it's, it's a fairly broad tool, it has some limitations, is, is, as I've emphasized, that we have to be careful about with bond counsel if y'all decide to issue bonds. But, you know, they can be used for the convention center, they can be used for the.
Well, I, I guess to incent a hotel.
The hotel, that can be used for parking.
Yeah, just for clarification, to incent a hotelier?
I'm sorry?
What is your question?
My question is, can we use it to incent a hotelier?
Well, sure, the, the purpose of the program basically is that a developer, you know, comes along, owner of a project that, that, you know, says, I'll build a hotel and/or, you know, any of the other, you know, amenities that are envisioned in this plan. And, you know, generally, and I'm just, this is a for example, this isn't a.
Hey, yes, yes is a good answer, don't worry.
Put it in gospel.
There's other people behind me.
They'll say, look, I can come up with some percentage of the overall project cost, the capital stack, you know, I can raise between debt and equity fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent. I can't do, I can't get the last twenty percent and I need the public assistance there. That's where you sort of, you know, the public-private partnership comes into play. So the city having this tool in the toolbox is, is, we often, you know, phrase it, enables y'all to sit in a position to be ready.
Can you have, Brandon, just, we got the answer, we, we do have several council members that do have questions, so we do need to kind of speed it along.
But we, we appreciate that.
Just a yes, no answer, and the answer's yes. Councilman, go ahead.
But yes, well, he's done, I think. So, right, you're done. Councilman Hernandez, three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we understand this, the, when you say incentivize a convention center hotel, does that have to be on the property, connected to the convention center hotel, or can it be in proximity?
If, if I may, I, I think we have to just be careful. So politically, your other hoteliers are not gonna want to see their hotel tax redirected to support another hotel development. So that's why we have two different tools, and I think we need to be very clear about the two different tools. The, the PFZ, you may be able to use that for a headquarters hotel, but politically, it's typically not smart to do that. So you really want to redirect those funds to the, to the.
To the convention center.
Facility itself, the event facility.
Got you.
And then the, the tool you're already written into, which is that ten-year rebate, is specifically written for a headquarters hotel, was done for purposes of San Antonio's headquarters hotel way back when. And so that basically is an eat what you kill, whatever they generate, they get to recoup, right? But that way, the other hotels in Corpus Christi are not contributing to this one big hotel. It's just that one hotel has its own little tool that it can use and we can use some of those things from the whole district to help that, that project. But the PFZ, which is the only thing we're really talking about today, that is really directed towards the politically palatable convention center expansion.
Okay, the second question here I have is that, you know, a, a large majority of our hotels are along SPID. And if you just look as a, as a crow flies, going to Moore Plaza, they're kind of on both sides of Moore Plaza, those are between eight and ten miles away from the convention center. So tell me how you would craft this legislation to reflect how you would capture that. And I'm assuming you're also gonna be capturing short-term rentals.
It does capture, it does capture anybody who pays the state hot, but in terms of how that is drawn, because what you state is absolutely true, I would, I would defer to Brandon and the team to, you know, say how they would draw that, that map. But, but the SPD hotels, there's a ton of them, and there's rental houses and all that. All that money can be captured, if they're paying state hot, it can be captured, but we'd have to draw the line to include those somehow.
There is something, a bit, a bit of being a bridge too far. I mean, we've got an existing construct in place and, that has been used and the legislature's approved that, and it's a three-mile radius. We have to recognize the risk of overreaching and perhaps sinking the whole boat, as opposed to getting what is within the model that makes the project work and is palatable, both at a local level and a legislative level, so that we haven't made Brandon's job too difficult in getting this bill passed. I think he would agree that this is already a limit because you're asking.
Brandon, even if you double the distance to six miles, you're not gonna capture a whole lot, you know, from that side of it. Like, I mean, three miles gets you to Spa and Hospital on, on shoreline and maybe up to the point where NPID intersects with, with thirty-seven. There's not, I mean, you're just not a lot of hotels or where you have state hot taxes or be paid, the majority of them are out on SPID. I mean, how, how, I mean, like, like I said, even if you double that distance, it wouldn't capture the, the hotels that you would need to really get those funds.
I think it's, getting back to some of the conversations, because staff has been having these same questions and dialogue with our legislative consultant, and it's really about coming back with the team and creating a strategic approach. Like Clay mentioned, you know, it, there is already existing legislation and statute that allows for this type of projects to happen. So it might, we have to consider that and how that works and then try to work around that. The immediate need would be the usable geographic area, especially because of Corpus Christi's geography and having the bay right next to it. That's an immediate need and, and might work better when talking and, and having this dialogue over in Austin. But we'll definitely bring back information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick comment. I'm gonna vote pretty much in favor of this resolution, I think it's a good idea, but I just wanted, I haven't heard this discussed before, and I wanted to kind of make an early mention of this, early on in this process, that as we're thinking about expanding or revising the, the American Bank Center, to speak up in favor of the Heritage Park homes that are located up there. In other words, talk about reuse perhaps of the Heritage Park region. I mentioned again, you know, they got the Galavon House, the Miriam Bobby's House, the Lichtenstein House, the Grande Grossman House, several of these are on the Texas Historical Landmarks list as well. I just want to make sure, early mention about that in this whole process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Klein. And Councilman Roy.
Mine is mostly as a comment, you know, I'm glad that, and I want to thank staff in terms of everybody that worked on this, staff and anyone that worked on this as far as getting it to where we're at quickly. Because now we have the ability in this session to be able to hopefully, you know, reach this goal and, and get the free money, if, I hate to keep calling it that, as opposed to having to wait until the next time session was in, two years. So I applaud you guys for that and bringing this together, and thanks for your work.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I think, yes, I'm, I'm really glad to hear everybody asking these questions because this is a huge deal, but this is a super positive step in, in the, in our city's history, it truly is. We will be the fourth and only the fourth city in Texas to be a part of, to be put into this pool. You have last Thursday, Houston filed. Houston, Houston is not even in there yet. They're doing what we're doing right now at the same time. Fort Worth and Dallas are in, so Houston will be three, will be number four. And gosh, I have to just say, it's not free money, but Mr. Banker over there, nothing is, no money is free. But it is a huge tool. It's, it's a tool that is really going to allow for this city to take one of the biggest strides in economic development and just a domino effect of, of what will happen with this initiative. So thank you all for asking the questions. Oh, by the way, update, we've had two national hoteliers that have reached out in regards to, I hope they're six hundred key hotels, but either way, they did reach out and said they're interested. People are, you, you can't do or build what you can do here in Corpus Christi, even at any proximity to our water. So believe me, those developers are out there salivating, waiting.
It's prime real estate, it really is.
Absolutely, it's prime. And I don't care where you put it, we are on the coast. You can't go east or west and do what you can do here. So super proud of our city, thank you for all your work, for the team, Wendy, Brandon, Hunton, everybody involved, thank you. So we're.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution to support legislation to grant access to state financing incentives to expand or improve the American Bank Center and surrounding property.
Okay, well, we've got to open public comment first. So I would ask anyone in the public that would like to make any kind of comment on item number eighteen, no, no, what item are we on here?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, I'm sorry. I'm moving to our dog ordinance to come forward. Is there anyone here? Okay, there being no one, I will close public comment. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. We've got Councilman Roy and Barrena as second. Yes, both. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie, thank you very much. And before we break for lunch, I'm going to just run through the consent agenda items. We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm going to ask if there's anything to be pulled, we will address anything that we pull after lunch, but I'd like to pass the consent agenda. Councilman? Yes, Mr. Risley?
Please note that item seven has a resolution that's been passed out, so if it's approved on consent or otherwise, the item on item seven, which is the resolution on the amendment for the consolidated emergency dispatch inter-local agreement, has been passed out to the city council, and that's what, what's in front of you would be passed.
Okay.
On consent.
Okay, do we have any items that, that any council members would like to pull within items five through 12? Okay, there being none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. So when we return, we will go, we will continue our agenda, yes, okay. So with that, we have no executive session items, correct? Okay, then we will go ahead and convene for lunch.
The execution of two one-year professional service agreements, each having two one-year options for a combined amount not to exceed $250,000 with PAC, People Assisting Animal Control for $150,000 and the Cattery Incorporated for $100,000 to provide spay and neuter services. Linda? Linda?
Is it on? Oh, there it is. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Linda Stewart, Neighborhood Services Director. And I'm here today for Agenda Item 17 first, which is a motion authorizing the execution of two one-year professional services agreements, each having two one-year options for a combined amount not to exceed $250,000 with People Assisting Animal Control, known hereafter as PAC, and one with the Cattery Incorporated for $100,000 to provide spay and neuter services, with a total potential amount not to exceed $750,000 if options are exercised with fiscal year 2023 funding of $125,000 from the general fund. With me today is Animal Care Services Manager Joel Skidmore and also Finance Assistant Director of Contracts and Procurements Josh Cronley. These contracts support the mayor's initiative to lead on animal care in our city, and we appreciate you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you.
We also appreciate all of our community partners who work to improve our efforts to address animal care and control in our city. As with all issues in a large urban area, animal care and control is complex and requires diversity of thought and perspective to improve how we enforce and provide compassionate care for animals, and I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize the efforts of our awesome ACS staff. So, first slide, Slide 2, please. We're on the wrong presentation.
Oh.
We need a presentation for number 17, please. Sorry, I didn't recognize that first. Still on 18. We need the spay-neuter item.
Yeah.
They have copies of it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
But we still have questions, and they're prepared.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilman Hernandez, you have a question, comment?
Yes. I didn't see it in your presentation when I reviewed it, but do you have, how is this going to work? How are you tracking this? Because, I mean, it's not that I don't trust these organizations, but I don't trust them, right? Just like I say it with staff, it's not that I don't trust you, I don't, it's, I don't, I've got to, I've got to make sure we're taking care of the taxpayer dollar here. So, how is it that you're tracking the, the actual process? I mean, if this is not going to be done in our controlled situation, like it's at our facilities, and it's going to be done somewhere out in the community, how do you track that?
Well, so these are, thank you, council member, these are reimbursement contracts. And so, no money goes out until we have a report of the number of surgeries and the outcomes on every surgeries that were performed by each of the vendors.
Okay, but, I mean, you could get a document saying that the surgery was done. How do you know that that surgery actually was done?
Well, I suppose when someone signs a contract with the city, there is a good-faith agreement being made there that when someone signs a document, that they are committing to the contractual requirements. In the contractual requirements, would you go ahead and advance the slides? Next one, right here. If you look at the last bullet on this particular slide here, maintain accurate medical records and transparency, transparently report on all surgical outcomes for surgeries conducted with the funding. It is a requirement that they tell us not only how many surgeries they conducted, which zip codes the residents owning the, the animals are located in, and also they, they, they tell what happened, what was the outcome, were there any complications, how did they address the complications? Because those complications, if they're associated with the surgical package, are the responsibility of the vendor. So, there is a, there is a burden on the, the vendor to report that, as with any vendor with the city.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, there's got to be some documentation to this, but, I mean, who's your contract manager for animal control?
Well, the contract manager in this case would be the program manager from Animal Care Services.
Okay, so when I say contract manager, it's, it's an adherence to the contract and verifying that everything is, and we've had this issue before where we've signed these contracts and nobody was verifying that the contracts were actually being executed per the contract, right? So, we went through this whole process in our, in our audit process to ensure that there's some mechanism to review these, the, the delivery of the, per the contract. So, that's why I'm asking you, who's, who's your person responsible in terms of that contract management? So, is it going to be the, the director?
Well, well, I'm the director of the department. So, I, I sign the contract, and then the, the organizational leadership signs the contract. And I believe, Josh, if you would go ahead and maybe as the Assistant Director for Contracts and Procurement, would you talk about the requirements for vendors with the city?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. So, Joel and staff, who are going to be facilitating the daily operation of this contract, have gotten with and are scheduled to sit with, again, the new contract manager that we added in the budget last year, to kind of go over what reporting requirements the vendors are going to have and how to track all of that. And all of the invoices will get screened, so when they, like Linda mentioned, they're going to be reimbursement. And so, we'll get a chance to look over the record, make sure that it, it meets all of the specifications that we're asking for in terms of zip code, patient number, you know, what services were rendered, and the, and the costs associated with all of those before any invoices are, or before any checks are processed.
Okay, so they're going to be utilizing the contract manager in purchasing, not in neighborhood services?
They're, they're going to be working together, yes, sir.
Okay.
They're going to use both, Councilman. So, people like Joel and other people in animal care, plus Josh's, the purchasing contract person that was added, will, both, both will do, you're asking, basically, the answer to the question is, there will probably be, there will be not probably some spot checking, some going to the surgery, the location of the surgery, Joel, right? And seeing, we can't do it for every surgery, but there'll be some type of an audit, a field audit, to say, you said you, you're going to do two surgeries today, we go and watch, yeah, you did two, okay, the record comes in, two for reimbursement. Of course, we can't be there every day, otherwise we might as well just do it if we're doing that.
No, I got you.
But there can be some auditing of it.
Even as an audit, you would only do a sample.
Right.
Right, so, you know, I just, I want to say, this is kind of that situation where you don't actually have something tangible, other than a record saying that we performed something.
Right.
So, I, I just want to, you know, if you do have some sort of checks and balances on this process, I want to make sure that we're actually getting the services that we're asking for here.
Of course.
And, you know, I, you know, just reading through it, you can see where there's an opportunity here for maybe getting reimbursed for stuff that didn't happen. So, I, you know.
It's possible.
Like I said, I just want to make sure that we're, and it's not to say that somebody's bad or anything, or there's any kind of malfeasance on the front side, I just want to, you know, there's the opportunity for it.
And, 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 Councilman, I would, I would, I would add that the partners that are going to be helping us with this are adamant about what they're doing. So, they really care about, no, I, I understand, but, but to say that, you know, I mean, I, I understand, and, and of course, there's oversight, and of course, we're going to know, you know, how many surgeries were done and how did those go about, but I can say PAC and the Cattery are big proponents of this. I, I think they would love to do more, they would love twice the amount of money so that they can do more and make a bigger impact. But I do appreciate your concern for that, because absolutely, we are using taxpayer dollars, and that is the reason we are, is because there is a huge issue, and the city cannot do this alone. We are not capable of doing it right now, we don't have a huge department that can just focus on spay and neuter, so, anyway, I do appreciate your thoughts.
And I said, this is more directed to our own staff.
Sure.
Right, to, to do the verification.
Right.
To do the necessary work, because if they're not doing it, it's shame on us, right, for not, for not validating these things. So, I, I ask you from the perspective, and I'm looking at with my auditor's hat on, from the Audit Committee, that this is, this has that opportunity. And it's not that the people are doing bad things. I know the people at the, at the rental car agencies weren't necessarily going in the, with the thought process, we're going to screw over the airport, you know, that's not the case. I just want to make sure that we're, if we're signing a contract and we're spending taxpayer dollars, we're verifying that they're being spent properly. So, that's up, that's on you guys.
Yes, right, and you are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a couple of questions. On the option periods, are there, will those be required to come back to Council for approval if we extend those options?
So, the option periods would be in relation to additional funding, that would be, have to be approved by the Council. So, there's one step, and then also, any, it, it depends on the amount of the contract, so yes and yes.
Okay. So, what we're approving here today is for an additional $250,000 over the first year of this project, correct?
Correct.
And then they would ask for an option, or you would ask for an option after that if you think that it's necessary, and that would have to come back to the Council for approval?
Correct. Any additional request for funding would have to be approved by the Council.
Okay. Okay, I just, and I agree with what Councilman Hernandez says, and, and he's supposed to ask those questions, because he's Chair of the Audit Committee. But this is a big deal, and Linda, we, we all had a conversation yesterday about this, and I appreciate your time on it, and so I'm going to say some things that you've already heard me say, and this is, the mayor hit the nail on the head, this is taxpayers' money. We're expending a lot of taxpayers' money to try to solve a problem that predominantly, I think, is because pet owners are not taking responsibility for their pets. And so, what I've asked for is not only documentation about how the money gets spent, but documentation on whether this program is going to make a difference. So, after we, we spent $150,000 last year doing a test pilot program, and I ask you if you, if we had any numbers on what that program may or may not have accomplished, and you, we're going to look into that. So, have you had an opportunity to do that yet?
Yes, sir, and so, we, the number of animals assisted was 1,439, and, and those were all provided with services, including rabies vaccines, microchips, all kinds of vaccinations, and flea and tick and heartworm preventative medicines, in conjunction with spay and neuter services.
Yeah. So, did we spend all the $150,000?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay. So, you see, from my perspective, this is a program about spading and neutering to help reduce our population. Now, when you say an animal is brought in and they also give them treatments for heartworms and all that, does that get paid for by this program?
Yes, part of this contract is to provide registered microchip rabies vaccine, vaccines to unvaccinated and un-microchipped pets, and that actually is to protect the, the health of the, the animals themselves. I mean, for example, an animal contracting, a dog contracting heartworm, is, is an agonizing death, and, and, and again, if we're, if we're interested in, in the compassionate care of animals, we need to offer these as, as a package to, to, to help them, to help them remain, remain safe and healthy.
So, and so, I, I will, I will tell you, and I shared this with you yesterday, I've struggled with this decision mightily, because your $150,000 you spent last year, we're going to spend another $250,000 this year, you may come back to this Council for two more options, so we're going to be close to a million dollars into this deal by the time we're through. And so, before I'm going to vote for any additional funding, I want to see some, the, the goal here, I understand, is to get animals cared for, but the other goal is to reduce the number of strays that people are complaining about running around the city. And so, we have to be able to quantify that and, and actually come back to this Council, I think, and say, okay, we did have an impact, because our animal control people are only picking up X number of stray animals now as compared to a year ago.
And, and in terms of the, the option clause, it is a standard clause, and, and Josh, correct me if I, if I'm my way off base, it's a standard clause in every contract we put together. So, again, we would need to approach Council for additional funding.
Right.
And it would be, that request would be based on our analysis, verifying, verifying the vendor performance, based on fact, whether or not we, we believe that additional funding is wise use of public resources.
Okay. So, in, in your testing of animals, and this gets down a little bit into the weeds, with respect to cats, are they being tested for, yeah, I understand, are they being tested for feline cancers, so that we determine right off the bat whether or not they're worth, that they can be saved?
So, so that is, is something, I don't know what, what the vendor, yeah, the leukemia is. So, again, remember, these are, these are procedures that are being conducted by, by the organizations, by the vendors, but maybe, Joel, do you have any, any information on that?
Councilman, I believe you're talking maybe along the lines of feline leukemia?
Yes.
So, a lot of those are like optional services that citizens can request from like a private veterinarian to get the test for it. It is standard to test for it. I think what Ms. Stewart was outlining is this, the requirements in conjunction with the spay and neuter that is at these agencies, that they'll be provided services. And I'm going to touch real briefly on, you know, I understand your concerns, and I would like to address that, you know, the idea is to ensure happy, healthy animals, and if we ensure happy, healthy animals in the home, then they'll stay home and we can keep them off the streets and keep them out of the animal care services. So, providing proper pet ownership education, proper pet ownership, you know, chances to ensure that the animals stay with their owners is, is, is a huge benefit to our community as well.
Well, there are four dogs in my neighborhood that are happy, healthy animals, but their owners let them out every morning, because they think it's good for them to run the neighborhood and experiment.
Experiment.
And so, there's nothing wrong with any of those four dogs, they're as healthy as I am, and, and so, the problem is, if they go, they, they are now going to a neighbor of mine who's, lives three houses up, who has a female dog in the backyard who's in heat, and so these dogs try to dig under her fence to get into her backyard on a regular basis. And so, my point in all this is, we're expending a lot of money for trying to reduce the problem that's created by people who already own the dogs, and we should hold them accountable, and it should be their money that they're spending on this and not general taxpayers. You know, I, I don't have any animals at home anymore, when my, when my two daughters moved away, I made them take their animals with them. So, and so, I just, I think this, this, I have a real philosophical issue with this, and I explained that to y'all yesterday. I'm going to vote to support the $250,000, but I will tell you, I'm going to have to see some really strong statistics about the success of this program before I'll support the next round of funding. I mean, and I'm serious about that, and, you know, we had a whole bunch of people up here speaking in support of this, and I understand that, and, and I, I know they, they're meaning very well, and, and I congratulate them for their dedication to this, but I can fill this room up with taxpayers who don't agree with this issue, and I don't want to have to do that. So, we need to have some strong statistics and, and documentation and data about how this program is working, and how it's helping reduce strays, and how it's helping to reduce the problems that were all explained to us today, from the open forum comments and from the comments that we've had with you. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm done.
Well, go ahead, Councilman Klein.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I share Councilman Hernandez's concerns about financial considerations here. I've worked with PAC and with the Cattery for more than 10 years, closer to probably now 15 years, and so I trust those two organizations quite thoroughly. I, you know, they've had a chance to make a great deal of money in the past, and they haven't done it, they've done, tried instead to do right by the community, and that is to try to reduce the, the animal populations. So, I think that they're going to serve the city well. I think there's, it's valuable to check on them and to make sure that there's some, some, accountability there as well. The question that I had, and I think I mentioned this to the staff last week as well, I just need to get, get a bit clearer, more clarification on this, has to do with the end product in all this, the $250,000, you know, this is, program is designed to remove, or at least reduce, the financial barriers to getting animals spayed and neutered. So, my question is, what's the end cost to people who are going to be utilizing these services at PAC or at Animal, sorry, the Cattery? What's it going to cost them to get animals spayed and neutered? And if they have to get, if they're required to get vaccinations, would that be covered in the cost as well? Because I wonder what that, that number's going to be, we have to find a number that's going to be able to, as I said, remove that barrier from the public.
So, so I'll preface this with, we shared the, what, what's in the professional services agreement, it's in your packet, if you look at your professional services agreement, Attachment A, which is a scope of service, page 2 of 2, there is a, a table in there that outlines the cost to the pet owner, and the cost to the pet owner is anywhere from, I think, $35 to $100. It's based on the species, so it's either canine or feline, it's not based on the sex of the cat, and it's based, or the cat or the dog, and it's also based on the weight. And so, the, the vendor, right, PAC and the Cattery, will determine the appropriate cost based on, is it a big dog or a small dog? Is it a female cat? Big female cat? Male cat? I, so, so those are different costs, they're outlined for you in there, but also, those microchip services and the vaccinations are part of that surgery package, so there won't be any additional cost to the, to the pet owner for those. Now, private veterinarians can really charge whatever they want for veterinary services, okay? And, and so, this is a way to standardize the cost based on what's in the contract, right, for these two vendors, and, and like I said- for veterinary services, okay? And so this is a way to standardize the cost based on what's in the contract, right, for these two vendors. And like I said, I can follow up with all of you and send that information out in the table format, but it's in your package if you want to take a look at that. And it's between, I think it starts at 35 and it goes up to about $100.
That's good. I think $35, I think, would make it accessible to a large part of the population. $100, I think, might start to be problematic with some segments of the population that we're trying to appeal to.
Yes, sir. And when you think about those $100 procedures, could be $250, $300. And so again, the cost is to spay or neuter a Cattery dog could be upwards of $200.
Yeah, I understand that. But regardless of what was in the private sector, $100 is still $100. And if you don't have that, then, you know, this might still be a barrier yet.
Sure.
Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
So I want to, you know, lately, I've just had a lot of phone calls almost every day, a couple times a day about dogs running loose, aggressive behavior, chasing people down on their bikes, causing all kinds of trouble. So I'm trying to understand, because I read something, I was doing some reading, and is there a correlation? Is part of the reason why we're doing this, is there a correlation between aggressive behavior and spade and neutering? Is there anything that we can...
They're actually a science, and I think Joel is an expert that can talk to that.
Councilman, so by no means am I a medical expert, but I've been doing this for a while, so my training experience. There is a correlation between, we'll use a male dog, for example. There is a reduced aggression when the animal is neutered that helps mitigate a lot of the behavior, even what Councilman Fusley was talking about, the roaming behavior, where they're out looking for the female, or it reduces their aggression if they are out. You know, first and foremost, they shouldn't be out in general. But if they are, then having the animal neutered does help reduce a lot of unwanted behavior.
Yeah, you can have, so if I'm correct, you can have your dog or cat, dog out, I guess. Cats are a little bit different, I guess. But, and as long as you can voice command it and control it with your voice, you don't have to have it on leash, right?
No, sir.
You have to have it on a leash?
Yes, sir. If your dog is...
If you're in a public area.
Yes, sir. If you take your dog out in the public, you have to have your animal on a leash. You have to have effective control, and it has to be leashed.
Okay. You know, one of the things I think about, you know, as a pet owner is how much money, and depending on how many dogs you have, it's expensive. And, you know, people that do the right thing and they get their dogs vaccinated and they get their license every year, you know, to make sure that their dog's licensed and they follow all the protocol, they're laying money out there. And on top of it, they're taxpayers, so we're laying additional funds onto them. So I think it's important that, and I agree with the other council members, that number one, that we show that there's going to be some merit with this program. And number two, I can see where it's a little frustrating also to the community that's doing their share, and they're having to, you know, pay additional monies or have their taxes go toward that when it could go toward something else. Unfortunately, there's a lot of things like that in life, just like littering. You know what I mean? When you take a look at the act of littering, it's kind of the same thing. It's the person that litters that has no regard. It's the person that's out there breeding, or they don't get their dogs neutered, that ends up having a big litter that we're paying the price for. I certainly am one that I want to be able to keep closed tabs in terms of the success of this. Because if it is successful, and we can prove that it's successful, and we get our bang for our buck, then I think that even brings up another question about, okay, what do we do? Do we expand this program, or how do we continue to improve upon it? If it's not effective, you know, and we're breaking even, then I think we need to look at some other alternatives.
Thank you, Councilman. And let me jump in here, because, okay, so this, this is a big issue. So it's, we're going to make an impact. I can tell you that right now. There, you know why? Because we are only doing what we can do at CCAC. You can't, there's not a city, I don't believe, out there that takes care of their stray population all by themselves. It's just, it can get, maybe there is, because they started very early in partnerships, in funding, in trying to address it as proactively as possible. But I can tell you, I'm not even sitting with them, but I've been working with them. There will be an impact. The question, and I ask you all, and I also ask staff, do not bring forth a, well, here's how many, we did this many. We need education here. And what we need is, how big is this problem? Is it kind of like our streets where we can put in $326 million over a three-year period and people are still sitting here, of course, going, well, you didn't fix my street. I don't feel like you spent $300 million of my taxpayer money. We deal with that. You know why? Because the streets were left neglected. This is a problem, Councilman, that has been neglected for years. And not because we purposely neglected it, because we don't have a huge animal care services. Because as we create and form a budget, we have to say, where are we putting these monies? That $250,000 was $500,000. When we were cutting the fat off of that budget, we went down to $250,000, which is a responsible thing to do, because never in the history, and I could be wrong, never in the history of this city have we ever allotted any monies for spay and neuter. But I will say again, when you guys come back with numbers, it needs to be an educational little workshop for us. Because I want the council members and I want the public to understand, this is not just a, let's pick this and save the dogs on the streets. This is a, we have a serious problem. And I have phone calls and emails to no end, because the public knows how much I love dogs. It is a public safety issue. When you have people calling you saying, I was attacked by a dog, and guess what? No one owns that dog, and he is procreating. It is our responsibility to put some focus on this and to join in partnership. We are not, we can't take it on. And so I want more education, Mrs. Stewart, please, because we really, it is a big part, and I really appreciate the questions. I really do. Because it is a taxpayer dollar. But remember, taxpayer dollars have to stretch across an entire city. And this issue is not only, it is only, for the most part, it is very heavy in certain districts. It, I don't see a stray dog in my district. I'm going to be real honest. Gil is nodding his head, no strays in five, hardly, right? And if you do, people are going, oh, God, whose dog is that? Someone, you know, the dog's out. Well, that doesn't happen in districts two and three. No one cares. They are, I shouldn't say no one cares, but they're roaming around like, it's crazy. And so those people, we have to care about too. And we, it is a public safety issue. You can see, I'm very passionate about this. So I'm going to go ahead and move on. But what I do want is education, because it isn't fair to say, here's the impact, and it was that much impact. The problem is this big. So again, when you pour $326 million into streets over three years for the first time in the history of this city, Corpus Christi, and the majority of our constituency will say, I don't see it, because it will take a very long time, as we all know. A billion dollars is a huge number to reach. It will not be in your tenure. But we have to do everything we can for those streets and keep them a priority. This is a problem that we have to do something about, and responsibly. We have to have data, we have to have numbers, we have to see how it is impacting it. But I don't want anyone on this dice to think, there's going to be some, yeah, we're down 25%. No, Dr. Vapor, yes, she will tell you, Dr. Draper will tell you, there are numbers that Linda and I worked on years ago that say, you have to do this many spay and neuter to get to this outcome. The numbers are there, and I want those numbers included too. Next time, when y'all bring us some, you know, like an update on all of this, remember that, Linda, those numbers. It's a science. There's, it's a mathematical problem. So bring that and some education on, you know, all of this, so we can see the real depth of this issue. Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Linda, for your team and your patience answering all my questions over the weekend. So I've lived here for 40 years. I've seen the homeless pet population. Seems like it's consistently been bad. I think it might be as bad as ever right now. You know, me being on the outside and not being on council, I always heard of different endeavors going on the city was doing that I thought we would make progress, but we haven't gotten to progress. The mayor touched on education, and I think that's great. We all need, we need to be educated. But I want to see the component where we're educating the community. Because, and especially with the next item, 18, they need to be educated on that as well. But, and I know folks aren't going to like hearing this, and probably Mr. Murphy's not going to like hearing this, but we're spending over $1 million on marketing water and gas, which we have a monopoly on. I don't understand why we're spending that kind of money on marketing when we could be redirecting those funds to market animal control and educating our public.
Councilmember, thank you for bringing that up. And I think in March, you are going to hear from Communications Director Logan Cobb about a comprehensive strategy that they have created in communications to help elevate the profile of animal care services. We're getting ready to launch, we're actually talking with the Animal Care Services Board on March 15th about the plan, and then getting ready to launch a really comprehensive social media campaign and media campaign to get the good news out about what Animal Care Services is doing. Part of that message is going to be educating about the changes that you all are going to be contemplating in agenda item number, and number 18. But, and if I may, Mayor, go back to two things. We can bring analysis, Dr. Draper has done analysis about stray population. We absolutely can bring that forward for council consideration. And I just want to mention that the Texas Health and Safety Code actually prohibits animal care services from providing any spay and neuter services or medical services for animals that are not actually sheltered at our facility. So there's actually a rule in place at the state level that prohibits that. So that's one of the reasons, the compelling reasons that we need to identify community partners and have a way to utilize our public funding to expand the scope of those services, because we are actually prohibited from doing it by law.
Okay. Thank you. And you may bring forth to Dan's Point, PAC, and some of the others, they do a lot of their own education, like, through really strong education campaigns. We need to include that in the, yes?
No, I agree. But it's a generational problem. And the problem is, is we've had irresponsible pet owners that have created other family members that have seen how irresponsible pet owners act. And so you end up having more irresponsible pet owners.
Right. Great. Good points. Councilman Hunter.
Just for the record, I know I have always been against the microchips, and I still am, but this is so, the problem has become so disastrous. Every weekend, just so that y'all know, I'm out trying to catch cats. I'm in District 4. It's a cat problem, it's not a dog problem. And it's miserable, because I can't move left to right like I used to. And it's hours and hours of trying to put these animals in cages. Just to give you a number, my family personally has done 18 out of 20. We can't catch the last male or female, but that's how many we've done. And that dedication that it takes to get that many is ridiculous. These ladies have done hundreds back here. I mean, yeah, some of them thousands is probably true. And I just want to say, after eight years of saying no to microchips, I'm willing to take this on, but I will be the first person within a year to get rid of them if we don't see any progress. Just the microchip part. So at that, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry, nevermind.
But we still have a couple of comments.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First, I have to defend my water and gas department a little bit. That marketing that Councilman Suckley is talking about is marketing that I've championed for since I've been here, and that is to generate revenue so that we're able to keep our natural gas prices and water prices down for our current ratepayers. So I've championed for that marketing, and hopefully, we will continue to do that. Also, to expand the usage of natural gas in homes and new neighborhoods. That's a big deal for this city. But I wanted to ask, and Mayor, I appreciate your passion for this. I'm really glad you took this on, and it needed to be done. And I guess, at the end of the day, the vaccinations and whatnot that are going to take place, and I'm, Joel, I'm really interested in the feline leukemia deal, because I have a good friend who works downtown, and she feeds the feral cats down there to the point where she can pick them up. And then she takes them straight to the vet, has them checked. And if they have feline leukemia, they don't spend any more money at that point. And sadly, they have to, you know, put most of those to sleep. But we have to be sure we're not going to spend money on an animal that is going to die in a month. So, but anyway, that's in the weeds again, I'm sorry. But has this kind of a program, I mean, are other cities doing this to the point where they have documentation on how successful this has been for them, cities of comparable size to us? Because, you know, I think in the long run of this, as we educate people, I think the people who are responsible pet owners, and maybe some who aren't now, who will become more responsible, that solves part of the problem. But the big problem I see is, is this, how is this going to reduce the number of stray dogs and cats that we see in this city if we don't have those irresponsible pet owners contributing to this program? Because it's just like, you know, we have a city ordinance where you're supposed to get your dog registered and vaccinated. But I'd venture to say 80% of people in this city that own an animal don't do that. So anyway, those are my concerns, and hopefully, everybody understands.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much. I've been listening to all these conversations, and I really was not going to contribute it, only to contribute to it, because I'm already on your side. So I thought, you know, there's nothing more that I needed to say. But just to go on record, I, like, our mayor has stated, we have neglected this problem, I mean, for decades, decades. And I think this is a great start. I just, I also acknowledge that, you know, Councilmember Hernandez makes a point too, is we want to make sure that our tax dollars are being used wisely. So I appreciate his stance and his, you know, knowledge on the money that the taxpayers spend. So again, I just want to say that I am grateful for the work that y'all have been doing for decades. I can tell you in District 2 that that is a huge issue. I mean, loose dogs. I just have a member, I mean, a constituent that, you know, her leg was not at, you know, in December, in January. She's still dealing with the recovery of that. And, you know, she still doesn't feel that, you know, of course, that the issue's been resolved, which it really hasn't. There's a process. Whenever there's a bite, there's a process. And I respect the dog owners, but again, also to compliment Councilman Fusley about responsibility. One of the things that I discovered as I was block walking through my district was, it's, you have like different neighborhoods, like maybe Lamar, that don't have that issue. They don't have loose dogs. But you come to my neighborhood around Bronner and certain neighborhoods, and it's night and day, like, you know. So there is something to be said about educating our public and being responsible. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that. The other thing I think that I really like is, people are not going to have to lie about where their dog lives, because in order to qualify for some of those programs, you have to live in a certain zip code. So, you know, there's no more like, oh, can I use your address? Because, you know, they're only doing the pets that are in 78415, or whatever it is. So I'm grateful, and I just, I thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Just a quick rebuttal to Councilman Fusley over there. Is, I agree completely that there is marketing dollars that should be used for those entities, but I refer back to last month where we approved $210,000 to paint water towers that didn't need paint jobs. So that type of funding, I think, could potentially be looked at in a different way.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, okay, well, we're not going to move on with that, but that is where we prioritize during the budget process. So, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Oh, I'm so sorry, ask, I didn't open public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on item number 17? Okay, I'll close public comment, thank you very much.
I won't take yes for an answer.
Yeah, I won't take yes for an answer. Item number 18 is an ordinance, amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Animal Care and Control by adding and clarifying definitions, creating and revising sections, including an intact animal permit, pet shop prohibitions, length of stay, updates to the dangerous and aggressive dog owner, requirements and fee schedule.
Motion to approve.
To approve. I will second, okay, you will second that, Councilman Barretta? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, can you, okay, Ms. Campus, is yours light on or is that from last time? Mr. Klein Hernandez, yes?
Okay, I don't know if you want to do your presentation on this, but I do have-
No, no, go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. I have some specific issues on this, like for example, the intact permit of $100 annually. It, I look at this in a lot of ways like we're punishing the people that actually follow the law. And to Councilman Fusley's point, he had mentioned that, you know, we have all these requirements in place in registering your dogs and stuff like that, and probably the majority of people in the city don't do it, right? So the ones that do follow the law are going to actually go out and pay this, but the ones that aren't following it now are probably not going to follow this either. So, and I look at this a lot of, a lot of ways like fireworks, right? We have fireworks ordinance in place in the city, but it doesn't seem to stop fireworks from being ignited during 4th of July and on, on New Year's, on New Year's Eve, right? And then it only applies within the city. You know, I could just see, you know, puppy meals stand out there on the corner of Weber or 43 in Crosstown, and they'd be completely legal because they're sitting outside the city limits, right? So tell me, how does this help by punishing people that follow the laws with fees and not, and not necessarily the ones that are not following the laws?
So I just want to make sure I understand your question. Why are we charging for intact? Well, so that is a, there's a direct correlation there to controlling issues of overpopulation. And that, and that's one of, one of the, the emphasis points for strengthening our code language, our ordinance language, is to, is to require folks who, who want to breed dogs that they do it in a healthy and safe manner, but that they also spay or neuter any dogs or cats that they don't want to breed. This is an intentional effort to help address overpopulation.
Okay, let's take, take this step back again. The people that are following the laws now will follow this and you're charging them an extra fee for following it, right? And for the most part, a lot of people are going to do the spay and neuter, especially if you do rescue. Your rescue dogs tend to be your mutts, you're not going to, I mean, you're, those individuals probably going to spay and neuter them right as they get them. But those of those individuals that, you know, want Chihuahuas or Shih-tzus or whatever, you know, purebred dog, you're, you're charging them $100 for a dog that they, they're probably going to be much more cognizant of, of taking care of that dog than others. So why are we doing this in terms of, like I said, this is, this is really targeting, you know, the people that follow the laws? So how is this going to make a difference for the people that don't follow laws? I mean, this is the problem we have to begin with. They aren't, you know, we have irresponsible owners that aren't following the regulations anyway and letting their dogs roam around. Unless we catch them, that, I mean, they're not going to go out of their way and say, hey, I want to keep my dog intact.
So we have our city attorney representative here, and in terms of following the law and how, you know, it will impact people who uphold the law, maybe Gabe, you want to take a, take a chance at answering that?
Well, I mean, honestly, Councilman, I mean, the approach is to have this in place, it's to foster responsible pet ownership. And, and I agree with what you're saying is that there are people that are already following the laws, that are already being responsible. But this creates another consequence to those that are not, because right now, there's no consequence to, you know, overbreeding pets, whether it be running puppy mills. There's no consequence for those that are acting irresponsibly. And this is just a, I hate to say the carrot and the stick, but this is to incentivize people to-
What, what carrot have we used?
Well, I don't know if there is a carrot. But I mean, but at the same time, there is no-
What I'm saying is, I mean, you just, you're, you're, like I said, there's, there's people out there that have like, you know, purebred dogs that are, you know, that aren't, aren't the ones that are the problems, but you're going to charge them $100 every year just to have that dog so they can possibly, you know, keep them intact that aren't the problem? How are you addressing, how does this address the ones that are the problem?
Well, I mean, the ones that, you know, if you, if there are those purebred dogs out there, if they are going to be bred, I mean, obviously they're not breeding, I don't assume that people breed animals for the sake of just, for the sake of breeding them. There is a financial incentive there. I mean, this just becomes a part of the cost of-
Mayor, let me address this, please.
Yes, go ahead.
6-59 intact animal permit provides that it's a criminal offense to have a harbor or have custody of a dog or cat over six months of age that is intact unless the dog or cat is subject to a valid intact pet permit. And just like many of our ordinances, it is enforced by persons giving citations or notices of violation to violators. And that's no different than any of our other ordinances. So the lack of a permit, having, having the animal without a permit will be a criminal offense and will be enforced criminally against people who violate the law.
Okay, so this is, now, this is, you're, you're, the way you had mentioned that, and we had talked about this before in terms of having the unleashed animal, right? If they're out and about roaming, they're obviously in violation and there's certain restrictions, like if it was, you know, if you had our gas department utility guy accidentally let the dog out, there's some extenuating circumstances. However, if they're out there, they get, they get the fine for having them off the leash or not being controlled, and that's based on that. But if they're in the yard, they're not bothering anybody, right? That's current existing, the way the ordinance is written. Okay, so the only way you would find out if this, if the dog isn't in your backyard, and I don't think our animal control officers are going to go looking in people's backyards, are they? Okay, so the only way we're going to find out is if they happen to be out on, on the streets, which are going to be fined anyway for being out, out and about. So not only are they not going to have, that ordinance not being followed, but then they have another ordinance for not being spayed or neutered with a, without a permit. So you're just kind of piling on this thing, even though they're already violating ordinance by having the dog out and about. Is this intended to have an additional layer of punishment on top of that?
Councilman, it's not unusual for an animal, especially an animal citation, to have multiple offenses that people are violating. Usually when, quite often when a person is violating the animal ordinances, they're violating all of them. That's, that's, that's very common, and that's why our citations have multiple entries.
So how does this, how does this change anything? I mean, if you're, if you're, they're not following the laws anyway, this is just another level, another fine that we put on them.
So could we, could, would it be okay if we look at the slide deck for a minute? Because there are, there's a current, there's current language and then there's proposed language. So if we could pop up the item 18 slide deck and go to slide three, please?
Councilman, while that's coming up, you're referring to the fee mostly, right? You're saying to pay $100?
Yeah, $100 annually. What, where did that number come from?
Right, that's really the issue, staff, is, right, we haven't answered the question yet, Lyndon, folks, but it's really about why pay $100 if you're, you're a law-abiding person anyway? Why have to pay $100 if the dog gets out and it's not, it doesn't have a permit, you're going to, you'll pay the fine if you have a permit.
What's the fine? I mean, your permit's $100, the fine's probably going to be $500.
But if you got a permit for no cost, then at least you have the permit. You won't get fined if it gets out. Is that what you're kind of saying?
Well, you're creating a process crime, right? It, it's a, you know, you don't have a permit, kind of like I had this same issue with the short-term rental, you're creating a process crime. The crime is not necessarily for having the short-term rental, but it's not for, it's for not having the permit, right? So it's about the, it, it's, it's a process crime. So if you want to have something like this, the people that are law-abiding are going to do it, right? So it doesn't have to be $100, it could be $10 or $5 or something along those lines, they'll go and do it. And that, that way they're not, you know, penalized for not having the permit. But I mean, you're penalizing, I mean, generally for the dogs that we're talking about here, you know, they've already paid, you know, $1,000 for this dog, right? And then another $100 every, every year for it, for the, the people that will follow the laws because they have a, you know, a specific type of dog. I just don't think this, we necessarily need to have the, the stick without the carrot for something like this because it's, it, like I said, we're just creating a process crime. And I understand the, the need on this, but what I'm referring to is the, the folks that have, you know, that are following the laws. The ones that aren't following the laws aren't going to follow it anyway. You know, just, they're not going to have that permit, they're going to get the $500 fine anyway. What's the, what's the fine for not having the permit?
Up to $500 to be in municipal court.
It's about $500, right?
It'd be up to, yeah, up to 500.
So it doesn't really matter if you have what the, the cost is on the permit, if you have a $5 permit, people are going to get it, right? If they have, if they have that particular type of dog. Or, let's make it $25. You know, just make it to where, you know, somebody's not necessarily somebody's going to be doing it every single year for $100 every single year. Now, most people that are going to have those kind of dogs are going to be able to afford that, but it's, it just seems like we're punishing the people that are following the laws.
And just to be clear, Councilman, you're, you're okay with registration, it's just the fee paying $100 to register.
$100 a year to have a dog. I mean, that you want, maybe-
So register them, if you want to get it, if you want to keep it intact, you register, you just don't pay $100.
Right.
Was $100 based on?
$5, $5 for the processing of the, of the, of the permit, whatever it costs you to do the permit.
Right. Councilman, the short-term rental fee that we assessed was based on a cost model of software co-compliance. Is this one based on that? Is there, was it just $100?
I don't believe it was.
Yeah, so we could look at some less-
Look at it based on what it costs to manage that program. I mean, just, I hate the idea that we're punishing people for, for having a dog they may want to breed. And I, I look at it from the perspective, I have a dog, it's a beagle, it's a rescue beagle, by the way, I didn't pay for it. Okay, but it's a good-looking dog. I'm very hard-pressed to want to, you know, maybe not have the opportunity to, to have a few of those puppies, right? Because, I mean, your dogs don't last forever. But I, I'm just, you know, I, I think about it from that perspective. I don't want to give, you know, the, the people the opportunity to, you know, have these dogs and not feel like they're obligated to, so like, you know what, I'm not going to keep this dog for $100, you know, when, if I lived in London, outside the city limits, I wouldn't have to do that. Right? I mean, where's the fireworks stand? Right outside the city limit. Perfectly legal, you know, breed all the dogs you want out there across the street and, you know, it's illegal. So I, I just, you know, we, we got to be cognizant that we're not-
Okay, let me, no, let me, let me, to your point, he's, he's referring to the nice breeders. I want to labradoodle. Those, you know, you got to go find those people and you're paying $1,000 a dog. What about the people, is this, this is the ordinance that would affect the ones that have a big cardboard box filled with little puppies sitting in Sutherland's parking lot, right?
This, this, you're talking about an update to the, to the, to the sales, to the commercial sales.
Well, I don't know, I'm asking, I mean-
Yes, yes, ma'am, so if you want-
But what is, what Gil's talking about is that the same ordinance that would address the guy at the Sunrise Mall parking lot?
Yes, 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 these changes, this, these, the suite of changes, I'm just going to-
There's two parts.
So you're only talking about-
I'm talking about the permit part, she's talking, the next part is the sales part, right? Where we're not allowing sales of puppies.
So you're just saying, don't charge $100, charge-
Charge the minimal fee of whatever cost they're on the permit.
Right, that's all he's saying, don't charge $100.
Okay, so what do you say to-
Do you guys have an alternate, alternate fee that you're recommending this morning, this afternoon?
Here, well, here, first I want to say, I don't agree with him, so don't be, don't attack the consensus of the council.
Okay, well, maybe we can do that.
$100 is a burden, somebody's making $1,000.
Okay, good point, all right.
Don't make a change just because one person does, it should be the consensus.
Well, I'm not talking about breeders, I'm just talking about, you know, everyday, you know, citizens that may or may not want to breed their particular dog because it's a, they spent a lot of money on that dog and-
Right, Councilman, I was just trying to give him an option to see if this consensus, if, if there's an alternate fee, then he'll have something to work with.
I mean, they would have to come back and, and tell us what that, what that'd be. Is there a second reading to this?
Yes.
Okay, so they have the opportunity to bring us back a second reading.
Well, you do, and, and here's what we need to know. We need to know what's involved in the cost, what is best practice, who all does this? You know, is, is there a permit for everyone? And literally go back and what, what is the, okay, we need to, we, we need to charge $100 because of this, we need, they need to have a permit because of this. So let's do that, we can, we can, it'll come back, as you mentioned, well, we've got, we've got more, more comments here. Are you done, Councilman?
Well, I'm done with that portion of it. The other side of it is the sales portion. I mean, I think we're, we don't want to sell dogs, I get, I, I get that, you don't, you know, there's people that have the, the puppies there on the corner, I'm not really sure that, you know, if they're even charged, you know, there's probably some problems with that because they're not charging sales tax and all that good stuff, right? So I don't necessarily have a problem with that, I don't know of any pet stores right now that, that I've seen recently selling dogs, you know, they don't anymore. They, they, I know Petsmart does that little spot for, for adoption, okay? But I, I don't, I don't see that as necessarily an issue. But I do have a problem with, you know, the, the $100 permit without really any justification for it. That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a kind of a question about this whole kind of process, I just need clarification. I think I asked you folks this question last week already, but I wanted to ask it again here in the meeting for the benefit of the public as well. Some of this pertains not just to the new proposed ordinance, but to the existing ordinance as well, and that is the definition of ownership. And I'm referring specifically to the feeding of feral animals, feral cats, feral dogs. And I think that, just to again clarify, make sure I haven't misspoken here, you indicated that, that if I feed a cat or a dog once, it's not considered mine. But if I feed it repeatedly, and I don't know what the exact number is, whether it's seven or 10 times or whatever, then it's considered mine and I would be required then to get that animal spayed or neutered, is that correct? Am I misunderstanding that?
So the current, the current law, okay, the current ordinance reads three days. And, and what I, what I wanted to say at the beginning of the, of the presentation is that what you see before us today for, for your consideration is the current, a set of current recommendations. As we go through the process of identifying how we administer the code, other things are coming up, and this is one of them. How is that administering, our administration of the code in that regard impacting people who want to do the right thing and take care of animals, right? So, so I don't have an answer for you other than the current, that is the current rule, okay? However, if, if someone, and again, Joel is here, if someone has, has a feral cat and they have kittens, right, Joel? This question came up with Councilmember Klein. They can in fact give the kittens away, is that correct? And, and not be in violation?
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yes, there, there is, there, there are some loopholes here.
Right.
And, and so we are identifying those as we go along. But what we have before us here is a set of recommendations that, that we have been working on for very specific, let's see, these items here are what you're looking at today in terms of incorporating the intact permit, the pet shop prohibitions, updating the local rabies control authority, length of stay updated, updating aggressive and dangerous dog section, and then the fee schedule. Those are the things that, that we're, are fully baked for you. But what you've identified is something that keeps coming up and is getting in the way in a couple, in a couple ways, in how we administer, and then also very good-intentioned individuals in the community are wanting to take care of animals, and we are ending up penalizing them for that. And that's not okay. We've identified that as, as, as something we need to look at.
Yeah, because I know Shane Gleason's done good work out at the university trying to get the cat population out there under control. I teach at Delmar College, we have not done a very good job of getting our cat population under control. Some of the faculty and staff have tried to do their best without much support from the administration. So I wanted to just ask that, just to kind of be, to check up on that. And then it seems to me, maybe I'm misreading this, but it seems to me like as if this is, these ordinances, the last one that we just passed, and this one, and perhaps as well, could potentially increase the workload of animal care services significantly. And, and I'm wondering if animal care services is kind of prepared for that, intend, maybe intended or unintended, increasing workload, unless I'm misreading that. intended or unintended, increasing workload, unless I'm misreading that.
Again, um, analyzing the impacts of, of these updates, if council approves them, will be part of what we, what we look at in terms of determining whether or not we have the resources to do the work. We're not yet doing this work as, as, as updated.
Right.
But once we do, um, have the authority to update the ordinance and we move forward, then we'll, we'll look at what our resource capability is.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm trying to speak delicately here, um, because I've heard a lot of complaints from the public about, uh, the services offered by, or maybe perhaps not offered, by animal care services. And I'm wondering if, if there've been deficiencies already in place, again, this is maybe just the public perception of deficiencies, uh, will those deficiencies be compounded by adoption of this, this ordinance?
That's to be told.
Right.
Once the ordinance is updated and we have the new practices in place. It, it's, it's hard for me to speculate in, for council about what the impacts would be until we've actually updated the ordinance and we're actually operating.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hightree.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think there are a lot of good points up here. I think a one-time fee is a better idea, especially if it's going to be $100, because, or to be, because if you're looking at this, it, it looks like things could, if you don't want to get your animal, uh, neutered, spayed, and you wanted to give it the chance to have a family later on, seems like that person's going to have to pay $100 a year also. Um, I'm just saying, that's what it looks like. May not be what it is specifically, but that is kind of what it looks like. We could clear that up and give us options on a one-time fee, or, I mean, even if it's a three-year fee, because dogs don't live that long, especially the big ones, that a lot of people like to breed, which go for a lot of money, who would easily comply with this. Um, if you could bring us maybe three to five different options. I'd like a motion to approve this item, work with the council between now and the second reading to bring us three to five different options on how we can make these payments, or receive these payments, sorry. Amendment, sorry.
Okay.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend, okay.
As somewhat stated.
And I was thinking that, but.
So the last thing I forgot to mention was, I wanted to see what that collar looked like, the, for the, the dangerous breeds, I don't know.
There it is.
Got one.
It's a beautiful orange. I know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second.
For an amendment, right? And amendment is to provide three, for the second reading, three to five different options on how to receive these payments, is that what you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And to work with the council, right?
And to make, well, how would you word it? To make it specific versus a family that wants to give their dog an option later on to have a family.
Mm-hmm.
Versus breeders.
Hmm, we'd have to, we don't want to probably do that on the floor, but.
Yeah, not on the floor, but through them to bring it back to us, those two things.
Yeah, we, we have your intent, and legal can.
I'm sure they can figure it out.
Bring it on the second reading.
They're very smart.
Yeah, clarify on second reading. Okay, so that's the motion to amend, correct?
Right.
Okay, prior, okay. So, uh, and there was a second, so is there a vote, Mayor?
Yes, yes, uh, yes, Ms. Rusley.
Yeah, that's not really an amendment, you haven't changed the language, but I think it's, I think we would interpret your direction as a request to come back with options for city council, but you haven't yet changed the ordinance itself, so.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So we don't need an amendment, and we, well, the expectation is by the second reading, we work on some of the things mentioned, or the things mentioned, and then we'll amend at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, Mr. Renendez says no. The motion carries.
I'll, I'll hold my vote until the next, uh, until the next reading.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jordan, thank you, Joel, everybody. Uh, let's see here.
Mayor, unless there's an objection, or, uh, we, and I know we need to have public comment, I would make a motion that we approve items 13, 14, and 15 as submitted.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, well, your light's not on. Sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a few questions about?
Absolutely.
About?
Too many ayes already.
Yes, of course.
Hey, as, as big as the dollar signs are on 14, it caught a banker's eye.
Right.
So, a few questions on that, of staff, if staff could help answer these questions. Is there anyone here?
Yeah, Josh is coming in.
Okay. Sorry, Josh, you're already halfway in the elevator.
He's on this floor, so he doesn't, yes, sir. This is on number 14, Josh, the solid waste disposal permit.
Thank you, sir.
All the direct, okay, the department's here as well, but go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, in, in the presentation, I saw a comment about likely reimbursed from FEMA. So, before we would actually, like, call TFR and say, we're ready for you, come down here, we're, we're activating our contract, would we have the commitment from FEMA that?
We would get pre-authorization from FEMA prior to issuing any of the, the task orders.
Okay.
Um, no, not necessarily, Josh. Yeah, so, um, we, in the event of a, uh, some type of storm, catastrophic type storm, uh, priority number one is to get the debris out of the roadway and get it off people's vehicles, homes, and so on. So we're going to do that right away, and, um, and then we'll try to file for reimbursement, or we'll do it simultaneously.
Okay.
But we're not going to wait. FEMA, it may take days, hours, weeks, months, so we can't wait, especially if the roadway is blocked, or if there's an emergency where it's, uh, not allowing people into their homes and so on. So generally, we get reimbursed, but it does, it can take some time. And public safety is priority number one, not necessarily getting reimbursed, that's an important, uh, item as well, but we're going to get, if we have to clear roadways to get public safety and people to be able to move around, we're going to do that.
So I assume we did something similar to this with Hurricane Harvey, it sounds like we engaged the same firm. Were the dollars this big? No.
Philip will answer that with the solid waste department. Go ahead, Philip.
Yes, uh.
Put the microphone on, please.
There we go. Um, Mayor, Council, Philip Aldridge, Assistant Director with Solid Waste, um, to specifically speak towards Harvey. Um, so the way it works is, if you back up a little bit, we have to have a plan on file with the state, a disaster debris management plan, has to be blessed by, um, local, uh, state and federal authorities. So that's on file with FEMA. Um, the governor, he comes down and, you know, during a disaster, let's use Hurricane Harvey, he declares a, he declares a disaster, they coordinate with FEMA, um, we initiate our, with our contractors on our end, like TFR, um, they come down, we assess all the damage, and we come up with an estimate. Um, so the damage collection, and this, this process is taking, you know, a handful of days to a few weeks by the time we get an estimate, and then we submit that estimate to FEMA, and once FEMA's declared that the disaster is reimbursable, um, they'll come back and they'll issue a check, you know, 50% payment towards, like a down payment towards the, the cost, and there's some cost sharing there. Um, that allows you to get the cleanup started, but the whole process for Harvey was, um, I think we were beginning to get invoices in August, and that went all the way through December, middle of December, the following, the same year.
So, so worst-case scenario, if we had a storm, we called, um, TFR, activated them, they came down here, they did their assessment, and FEMA said, we're not going to pay a dollar for whatever reason. Doubt it would happen, but if it happened, what's worst-case scenario, what would we be on the hook for? Is there some sort of a minimum that this contract would require us to pay, or are we just at, at, at waiting for them to come up with what their scope is before we pay a dollar?
So this, this contract, uh, this contract is, is for disasters, um, and to go back to Harvey, um, just so you have actual numbers, for Harvey, uh, the contractor that we had on, on standby then, we, uh, they invoiced 7.3 million. We had another contractor that received a million dollars, and then we submitted 2.8 million dollars in forced account labor from the city. Uh, and we got over 90% of those charges reimbursed by FEMA, and that was for Harvey, if you link back to the Harvey cleanup. Um, during this process, for the Hurricane Hannah, we, and the winter storm Yuri, they were not federally, like, they weren't FEMA-declared disasters, but we utilized this contract as a framework to call in the contractor, said, hey, we need some help, come help us clean up the roadway a little bit faster than what we can. Um, so during Hurricane Hannah, if you can think back to the, that cleanup, that we paid out $575,000, and then winter storm Yuri was $670,000 with the debris collection.
So, back to, I'm, I don't mean to harp on this, but worst-case scenario, what would we be on the hook for?
For everything, the cost in tot- in total, the company's not going to do it for no fee, so we hire, this is an on-call contract, so that we're ready to go when the encase is an event. If there's debris in the roadway like Hannah or any other, uh, event that's pretty catastrophic, we do an entire cleanup of the entire city, and, uh, anywhere from half a million to a million dollars. If there's no reimbursement, we pay, the taxpayer pays the entire amount.
Okay. My concern is about the restoration companies, I'm sure a lot of y'all have dealt with folks post-Harvey that hired restoration companies, and, and I'm not saying TFR is one of those, but there are some unscrupulous people in that industry, that there was a lot of litigation year two, three after Harvey, uh, people that signed contracts with restoration companies, and then they figured what they got themselves into, and they couldn't get out of it.
Yeah, this company here, we've used twice already for the winter storm and for Hannah, so we have good working relationship with them. We only pay them if they haul, it's based on their tonnage. We don't write them any check in advance, it's based on cubic yards that they haul, actually haul off, and we actually watch them, Councilman, we watch them and verify it, so, yeah.
Okay. And my last, my last comment is regarding the contract and it being five years. Um, a lot can happen in five years regarding the viability of TFR to perform on this contract. Takes a lot of equipment identified in this contract to fulfill what we would hope that they could fulfill for us. So is there some sort of a performance bond? There's a comment in the, in the package about, in the event a payment bond, a performance bond, or both are required of the contractor to be provided to the city. It doesn't, it says if, I would think it should say.
Yeah. Essentially, we don't guarantee any dollars going to them. What that means is, all we have is this guarantee of a price list, which ends up being far better than the list, than the amount we would be paying to the, like you described, restoration companies. What they really have on the line here is their re- reputation nationwide as backup store, as storm providers. If they ever don't provide for a storm, then that means that their business model for all future cities that they are always soliciting for falls apart. So that's a better guarantee than a bond.
Yeah, I, I, I get that part of it, but in the meantime, we all saw post-Harvey, every minute counted in terms of, of extracting water and getting power back on and all those things that were necessary. Hotels and condos in Port Aransas lost hundreds of millions of dollars because of the delays of getting power back on and water extraction, and what it takes to, to bring our community back. So it, it's a big deal, this is a huge number, and so, sorry, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Those are good questions, Councilman. And again, this company we have a working relationship with, uh, they've actually uh, guaran- they're planning on buying additional equipment, uh, to service us, and they did in the last, uh, event that we had. So it was through a bid process, but they were the low bidder and, um, also a high performer with us.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, we, we, we use a company just like this one at the county, and it worked very well, it saved us a lot of time. The one caveat is, and everybody needs to understand this, there has to be a disaster declaration before you can utilize this.
Right.
So if there's not a disaster declaration, it's up to you to clean it up. And we found that out hard way with, with a big thunderstorm that hit and knocked down a lot of trees in one area of the county, and we couldn't use this because the governor didn't declare it as a disaster. Uh, the other thing, Peter, I brought up, uh, with, with staff is, we may want to look next time at, uh, the possibility of working with Navesys County to see if, if we join forces, if we might not get a better deal on pricing and whatnot. Because they do this, they do this, in fact, they just finished, uh, awarding their contract here, uh, a few days ago. So, uh, it might be something that would behoove both of us, I don't know.
We can absolutely do that.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, yeah, good idea, thanks, thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions and comments. Um, so we have a motion, did we have a second? Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And that was for 13 through 15, right?
13, 14, and 15. So our last item of the day is item number 16, and that is a motion authorizing amendment number two to the professional services contract with Pape Dawson Engineers, Inc. of San Antonio, Texas, to develop a more robust consul- uh, consolidation of the draft drainage design manual and the drainage design criteria manual. Mr. Dice?
A little disappointed I didn't get on the last motion, but it's okay.
Uh, so today, Michael Dice.
Just got that.
Assistant Director of Development Services, we're here to talk about, uh, an additional service request for our impact fee and master planning study. So again, as a reminder of the project, we're developing a comprehensive master plan for water, wastewater, roads, and stormwater, um, that will have master plans for, uh, funding and future needs for the city, as well as studying the feasibility of impact fees and a funding mechanism. So it's a lot to read, but briefly, each master plan is going to be divided into service areas. Again, there's four different master plans, multiple service areas per master plan. Uh, the projects will develop a capital improvement project plan for each master plan. That'll be done through the CAC, the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which is appointed by members of council, as well as the city manager. So again, the timeline of where we're at, we, uh, brought this to council, uh, in February of '21, uh, to have it approved for the, uh, contract. Uh, the contract was executed in March of '21. Uh, we came back for a change order in October of '21, uh, due to the fact we had lack of data for stormwater. of '21 due to the fact we had lack of data for stormwater. Total contract is 3.48 million. Currently, this change order is requesting for a change for $271,000. Specifically, that change order is addressing a combination of the drainage design manual and the drainage design criteria manual. It'll use the information that's provided in the stormwater study that's going on now to give a more comprehensive design criteria manual. In addition, Pape Dawson is going to be leading more meetings. The original contract was for six meetings. We've already had 11, and we've had a request from the SEAC members, including the chair. I don't see him here today. He was supposed to be here. But the request for additional meetings, and we're looking at 15 more meetings. These meetings are specifically to address each individual master plan. So, a lot of the times, these committee members feel like they're taking a lot of the information from a fire hose. We want to make sure that they understand and they comprehend everything involved because this is so important to the city. So, we're having that change. Again, we've had 11. We're proposing 15 additional meetings. So, with that, we're proposing the acceptance of this change order, change order number two for $271,000.
I move for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a couple of comments. Councilman Roy. Sorry, I don't know. I was looking this way. Councilman Roy.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. You know, I was on the committee, and one of the things I want to kind of understand, so we're asking for how many additional meetings?
This will be 15 additional meetings.
15 additional meetings.
Actually, it's 20 in total because they were only contracted for six. And by the end of this, we'll have 26.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at the volume of information and look at some of the scope of a lot of what they're looking at, how did we think in the beginning we could get that done in six?
Well, the state mandates that you have a few, we were looking at, you know, presenting that information in totality, basically doing an all-dayer. And come to find out, that's not going to be the best way for what we're doing. You know, a lot of, since we have one funding mechanism and we may be moving to another, we want to make sure that everything from the study, the plan, and the discussion is completely vetted, and it's 100% understood. We don't want to make sure anything is rushed.
So, how confident are you that at the end of this particular change order, that you're going to be where we need to be?
Our goal is to have this done. We're already in, the master plans are wrapping up now. We just had our most recent update on the water master plan. They'll start considering those master plans in the next meeting. And then after that, again, we're going to have multiple meetings on roads. We'll have multiple meetings on, basically, so we'll have a road master plan. We'll have two meetings of those. We'll have two meetings on the stormwater master plan. We'll have meetings for, obviously, water, wastewater. We'll talk about the impact fees, each one individually as an individual meeting. Again, we don't want to confuse this fee with that fee. And again, it's, sometimes it confuses with the service areas because that's how those fees will be dedicated. You have many service areas. You have, you know, two for water, 16 for stormwater, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I just, you know, when we, I know that as council, when we start getting change orders, we, you know...
Oh, understood.
So, I just want to make sure that hopefully this change order will be the...
We are on the downward slope of this roller coaster.
Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, so, this is, I think, the second amendment we've done on this contract?
Second change order, correct.
Right. The first one was to add stormwater to it, right?
To add additional work for stormer.
For stormwater.
The data that we had was not sufficient.
And then we worked in conjunction with the county with the funding that they had for...
Their tri, yeah, their tri-study area. We're working with them as well.
Okay, so, this is kind of, so where are we? I mean, how, what percentage completion are we?
Well, I believe Al gave you guys a brief here pretty quick. If we were a percentage, we are almost done with the master plan, so it should be presented next month.
Right, so there's two components to this, the master plans, and this is just for the master plan component, right?
There's actually multiple components. So, you have the land use study, which is pretty much done. You have the master plans, each individual master plan. And once those are reviewed and approved, then you have to have the impact fee discussion on each one as well. So, there's multiple kind of moving wheels in this, and we want to make sure that everything is rock solid when the chair of SEAC comes to you, hopefully by the end of the year, to talk about...
Well, I appointed him, so he better come.
Yeah, Councilman...
Well, you have to force that.
Right, and Michael's correct. So, by the end of the year is the plan. This project should be done by the end of the year with a meeting every month with this group between now and the end of the year. We are going to send you a memo that kind of details this out, not an exhaustive one, but shows the final steps in this process. Was it this week, Dice, or last week that we had the meeting with the SEAC?
It was last week.
Last week, we had a meeting.
We're talking by component, right?
Right.
Master plans.
Correct.
Yeah, you're going to see all the elements. It was a real good meeting. I asked Steve to prepare a memo to send that to the council, so you'll be aware. And council can go, any council member can go to those SEAC meetings. I, in fact, am going to encourage you to do so. We need to start making sure that, I think they're on your calendar, but make sure you're aware. Just drop in for a little bit because it's good information to keep you up to speed on what's happening. I have been going, and I continue to go, especially this final stretch. So, the briefing memo will lay out the final steps, what master plan is presented, when the rate structures will be discussed, when they have to approve something, and then when it comes to city council, they being the SEAC. But the short answer is by the end of this year.
And that also includes posting those master plans...
Yes.
In online format?
Yes, sir. All that stuff, I know Councilman Pusley's not a fan of websites, but all that stuff will be on websites. We'll use social media as well to reach out, and I'll personally deliver those plans to Mr. Pusley if he needs them.
That's a huge change from what we've been doing. I mean, and then to include it with a GIS component to it, I mean, this is, I think it would be a game changer for developers to be able to just access and engineers to get that information regularly, which they can't do now.
Right.
Correct.
Pretty excited about getting it.
You know, the whole reason I approved that is because I thought that was a great thing, so, or I voted for it, sorry.
Well, they're in support.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for the information.
Councilman Suckling.
Are all committee members going to all meetings?
I'll have to double-check that.
I mean, is that the intent? I'm not asking for attendance, but they don't split up into subcommittees or anything?
No, we...
Wow, that's a huge commitment.
Yep.
We really ought to give some attaboys for all those people that are serving on that. Thank you.
Well, if you remember, we just sat some new members, so they are getting on board. We're actually doing, we're having a brief tomorrow for the new members to kind of, it's like an orientation to kind of get them up to speed of where things are.
Okay. I think that's all the questions. Councilman, you're done. Yep. Very good. Motion to approve. We're going to open public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment? Okay, now, we'll close public comment. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second on the floor already. There was one on the floor already. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.